Please join me in prayers. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted the state of wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please join me in allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public on which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Counselor Janess.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Rourke.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Counselor Yem.
Here.
Mayor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Here.
Counselor Gitcher.
Here.
Ten present.
Any counselors, ask a moment of silence. Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, I'd like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber for two remarkable women. The first is Carol Anne McCarthy, a lifelong Lowell resident. She was the wife of Paul McCarthy, who died in 2006. Carol was educated in the Lowell schools, attending the Butler School and graduating from Lowell High School. She then attended Northern Essex Community College, attaining a master's degree in early childhood education. Carol was an active member of the former Sacred Heart Parish and was currently a member of the Sacred Heart Neighborhood Group and will be remembered for always being involved in the neighborhood activities. She was a shining light to the Sacred Heart Neighborhood and a credit to the city for her dedication to her section of the city, her neighbors, and her residents. In the early 1980s, she began teaching at Sacred Heart School and remained there until the parish closed in 2004. She then taught kindergarten at St. Michael's School in North Andover from 2005 until 2019. She is survived by her children Carrie, Deanna, and Karen. Her grandchildren TJ and Donovan. Our sympathy to her family, relatives, and many friends. I'd also like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber for Mary Lou Bolduc, widow of the late Walter Arthur Bolduc, who passed away in 1973 after 20 years of marriage. Mary Lou was raised in Lowell where she attended St. Peter's School, graduating from Keith Hall. She was employed as an executive assistant, her early entry career working at the City Hall Veterans Office, the Lowell Housing Authority, Solomon Mental Health Center, and at University of Lowell College of Health Professionals until her retirement in 1982. Mary Lou spent most of her life as a Lowell resident and was a communicant of St. Rita's Church, where she served as president of the Women's Club. She enjoyed helping others and volunteering her time, helping many organizations, including St. Vincent de Paul Society, the Greater Merrimack Valley Convention, and Visitors Bureau, the Red Hatters Club, and the Riley School in Lowell, where she volunteered with kindergarten. Mary Lou is survived by her children David Bolduc, Mark Bolduc, Deborah Belanger, Denise Dirk Krikorian, Lisa Newell, Becky Trapania, her eight grandchildren Alex, Brian, Matthew, Michael, Jeremy, Leanne, Maddie, and Ally, and her nine great-grandchildren. We offer our condolences to Mary Lou's family, relatives, and many friends. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber to all those who have passed away since our last council meeting. May they all rest in peace. Thank you.
Counselor Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chambers for Wanda L. Cooper, 70, who passed away Saturday, February 4th, with her loving family by her side. She was the beloved wife of the late John P. Cooper. Born Lowell on August 18th, 1952, she was a daughter of the late Shirley Martin Pilato and Frederick Pilato of Lowell, who survives her. Until recently moving to Drakehead with her son John, Wanda had resided in Tucson, Arizona for over 30 years. In Arizona, she had been employed by the Drater Manufacturing Plastic Welding Company as a supervisor until her retirement. Wanda enjoyed listening to music and outdoor activities such as camping and hiking. In addition to her father, she leaves two sons, John P. Cooper Jr. and his wife Dawn Close of Drakehead, and Mark W. Cooper of Cambridge. Five grandchildren, Alicia, Mark, Justin, Corey, and Tara Cooper. Her siblings, Charlene Kobach, Glenn Hall and his wife Lisa, Wayne Pilato, Carol Millerby and her husband Jim, and Robin Pilato, a sister-in-law, Frances Hall, and several nieces and nephews, including Lisa Santiago, with whom she had a special bond. She also leaves behind her cousin Sandra Hood, who was like a sister to her. She is also the sister of the late Gary Hall. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Leahy.
Thank you. I'd like to offer a moment of silence for Philip E. O'Brien Jr., 81, of Lowell, Massachusetts, member of well-known Greater Lowell family, passed away peacefully at his home on Wednesday, February 1st, surrounded by his loving family. He was the loving husband for over 58 years of Brenda A. Blazanis O'Brien of Lowell, who survives him. Born in New York on November 7th, 1941, son of the late Philip E. and late Lilian T. O'Brien. He attended Lowell Schools, was a graduate of Lowell High, class of 1959, who was a county medalist. Phil went on to attend Boston College, where he received his Bachelor of Arts degree in English. A veteran of Vietnam War, Phil proudly served his country as a lieutenant with the U.S. Navy. Prior to his retirement, Phil loved his second career as an antique dealer, operating Arbor Antiques in Lowell. Previously, he was a well-known stockbroker in Greater Lowell for many years. In addition to his wife, Philip is survived by his son David O'Brien and his wife Stephanie of Hanover, a daughter Elizabeth O'Brien Fury and her husband Matthew of Linfield, four grandchildren, Harry Griffin O'Brien and Ella, I'm sorry, Harry and Griffin O'Brien, and Ella and Ann Fury, three siblings, Joanne Riley of Boston, Kevin O'Brien of Lowell, and Mary Elizabeth Dee Dee O'Brien of Quincy. A sister-in-law, Heidi Coburn of Tinsborough, and he's also survived by a niece and four nephews. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Mr. Clerk, please dim the light. Before we start the meeting, I just want to briefly introduce a special visit, my childhood friend, visiting all the way from Cambodia, Tru Daye Vaw. Tru Daye, has visited here for a couple of days. And he was the gentleman, Counselor Mercier, if you remember, when you had your delegation with Mayor Ronnie Ellet at that time, and Mr. Golden, that time still representative, that took care of the Lowell City delegation to Cambodia back in early 2000. He's also a friend of Counselor Noon and Counselor Yan. Appreciate you visiting us all the way from Cambodia today, my friend. Thank you. We now start the meeting with the mayor's business, 2.1, Communication Remote Zoom Participation Motion to Accept and Place on File by Counselor Janess, second by Counselor Gitcher. The motion is adopted. Item 6, 2.2, this month is Black History Month, and the city has great events celebrating all the contributions that Black Americans have made to the city of Lowell. We started with the flag raising this past Saturday and also at a gala on Saturday evening that was hosted by the Afro-American Collaborative, where we celebrate the excellence of Black Americans in our community. And each week, we're going to highlight one individual to have made unsummonable contribution to our community. And this idea is put together by Counselor Robinson and the mayor's office. Before I surprise this person, maybe it's not surprising anymore, we did not put any agenda on purpose and name the person on purpose. So I'm going to have Counselor Robinson say if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this person that we've chosen first, it's about selfless service. It's about public service. It's about caring for your community. This person has volunteered in excess of 250 hours last year throughout various organizations. And it's not specifically to the African-American community. This person is involved in every community in our city. This person has tirelessly been there for art project installations that are going on, to planning that's going on with CDBG funds and everything in between. And I think it's only fitting that we kickstart the month in celebration, in honor of this recipient of this citation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And I hope this is a surprise. I'm going to call upon this person's name, but please come to the podium. It's my honor to welcome Ms. Mona Tyree. I hope you were surprised.
I am surprised.
I'm going to read this official citation, and then we're going to open the floor to comments. Official citation, "Be it hereby known to all that the city of Lowell and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Mona Tyree." Mona Tyree is a community advocate, activist, and a longtime resident of the city of Lowell. She enjoys working with the community in any capacity that she can be of service to help. Mona sits on multiple volunteer positions within the city of Lowell. She's currently involved with the Centralville River Path Art Jury, the Lowell Forward Master Plan Committee, and the Lowell Forward Housing Subcommittee. Mona has also volunteered with DIY, free soil arts, visualizing, Lowell Black History Trail Project, the DIY Visual Black History, Black Joy Sculpture Project, the Citizens Advisory Committee for CDBG Funding, multiple Centralville Cleanups, the Centralville Food Truck Festival, many years of Afro-American outings, as well as volunteer for the Lowell General Hospital Walk for many years. She is a proud member of the AACC, which is the Afro-American Community Collaborative, and has helped to reestablish this organization as a pillar of the African-American community. Last year, Mona had volunteered over 250 hours of her time, helping to improve our city and communities for all our residents. Mona is willing to dedicate her time and energy whenever they may be a need. Now therefore, I, Mayor Sir Cry Chow, on behalf of the entire city council and residents of Lowell, hereby offer our gratitude and best wishes to you for your selfless community service to Lowell, Massachusetts. Signed today by myself and the entire city council.
Thank you. Thank you all. Very much surprised, very appreciative. And I say "am" a lot when I'm caught off guard because I talk all the time. I just want to say thank you. Thank you for seeing me. A lot of times, when you're doing service, you're not seen. And I don't do anything to be seen, but it is appreciated to be seen. So I thank you all. One of the comments that I made at the flag raising, I have it written down so I can say it completely the correct way. It's a quote from Shirley Chisholm, and she quoted many, many years ago, "Service is the rent you pay for the room on this earth." And I truly, truly believe that. I believe you give back. There have been times that I needed help, that I was in situations, I was homeless. There was all kinds of things happening in my life, and I always got help. And because I got help, I think it's my service to give back in any capacity that I can. Doesn't matter who you are or where you're from. And I just want to say thank you. I truly appreciate it.
And I would like to ask you to come inside the chamber. We'll take a photo with all the counselors. Need a motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Robinson, second by Counselor Mercier. The motion is adopted. We now go to the next item, which is 2.3. This is a brief informational on what the city, the mayor's office, and the city council is doing. We are putting together a seal delegation in collaboration with the partnerships and the stakeholders to go visit the city of Montreal, which is very, very similar to the city of Lowell. They have the Winter Festival, they have the Polaris of Light. Many of the things Montreal is very, very similar to Lowell, and we're looking forward to learning many of the cultural activities in Montreal. We could do a cultural exchange. And I would like to ask one of the planning partner, our partner, from President of the Chamber of Commerce, Ms. Danielle McFadden.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I'm Danielle McFadden. I'm the president of the Greater Lowell Chamber of Commerce and also a proud resident of Lowell. The Greater Lowell Chamber of Commerce is excited to partner with Mayor Chow's office on a cultural exchange to Montreal, Canada next month. As many of us say, all roads lead to Lowell. And Montreal is no exception. During the 1870s and 80s, waves of French Canadians immigrated from Montreal to Lowell to work in the mills, including my ancestors, although I cannot speak French, much to my grandmother's chagrin. Lowell's cultural exchange to Montreal, Canada's second-largest city, will foster camaraderie between city leaders and community stakeholders, and spark creative ideas and best practices that we can bring back to the mill city. Montreal's history is rich, and their assets parallel Lowell in many ways. From the St. Lawrence River, canals, and cobblestone streets, to festivals, galleries, murals, and unique businesses. Much of Montreal is known for being charming, yet modern. A mecca for technology, education, tourism, food, and film, among other things, the city is truly a center for commerce. It is our intent to meet with Tourism Montreal in the Chamber of Commerce of Metropolitan Montreal, to exchange ideas and learn more about Montreal. Particularly of interest from the Chamber perspective is learning new strategies for economic development and creating a vibrant, walkable downtown. Through my research and preparing an agenda for this trip, I have an appreciation for Montreal's creative way of marketing their city, to residents and tourists alike using a comprehensive website, much like Mosaic Lowell's, a passport program, and easy-to-follow and aesthetically pleasing maps and guides for all interest groups and even seasons. By going to Montreal and immersing ourselves in the city, in all the city has to offer, we return with a fresh perspective, and I'm guessing a renewed appreciation for the city of Lowell, and the progress we've made and all the limitless potential still waiting to tap into. I also wanted to note that we've invited the city counselors, Lowell State Delegation, UMass Lowell, Middlesex Community College, Mosaic Lowell, Lowell Plan, and Greater Lowell Community Foundation, and we are working on a full itinerary for our trip.
Thank you, Danielle. Any comments or questions by any of the members of council? Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. I think this is a great opportunity. I think especially with Lowell's history and so many Franco-Americans that have migrated to Lowell from Canada, especially, you know, going way back to the manufacturing and mill days. So I think this is a great opportunity, and I know, being a public works person, they do winter right up there. So I think there's lots to learn and emulate. So I appreciate that opportunity. Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you, Danielle, for being here to make the presentation.
Thank you, everyone.
Need a motion to accept by Counselor Yan, second by Counselor Rourke. On face of eye, pose a note, eyes have it. Motion is carrying. We now go to the next section on the agenda, which is Section 3, City Clerk, 3.1, Main Minister Veterans Subcommittee, January 31st. City Council Regular Meeting, January 31st. For acceptance, actually, any questions or comment by any counselors? Hear none. Need a motion to accept and place on file by Counsel Drinkwater, second by Counsel Leahy. On face of eye, pose a note, eyes have it. Motion is carrying. We do have, we're coming up on the general public hearings for some o'clock, so we do have a few minutes. We've got to skip that section and go to the...
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, over here.
Counsel Drinkwater.
Seeing as we have a few minutes before 7:00, we do have registered speakers here in the chamber on item number 7.3. Could I move that we take that item out of order?
Motion by Counselor Drinkwater to take item 7.3 out of order, second by Counselor Janess. 7.3, vote, accept, expend fiscal year '23 earmarked funds on Shed Park. Waifu reading and second reading by title. City of Lowell and city council vote authorizing the city manager, acting through the Department of Planning and Development, to accept and expend fiscal year '23 earmarked state funds in the amount of $50,000 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Mr. Clerk, please call the registered speaker.
Brian Durkin.
Good evening, Manager Golden, Mayor Chow, members of the city council. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. My name is Brian Durkin. I'm a resident of Lowell, Massachusetts, and I also sit on the Board of Directors of Shed Park Baseball and Softball Organization. I'm also pleased to put out there tonight, for the first time, that Shed Park is now also part of the founding members of Lowell Youth Athletic Association, along with Calvary Park, Highlands, Pawtucketville, Centerville. For the first time in the history of the city of Lowell, we are a united Lowell, unified Lowell, playing sports, baseball and softball, to start with the hope of many sports to follow, including basketball, volleyball, soccer, et cetera. The goal here is to make sure that every single child... The goal here is to make sure that every single child in the city of Lowell has unbelievable and equal access to the best possible facilities. Approximately last February, on one of the coldest days in February of last year, we contacted Representative Vanna Howard, who met us out at Shed Park. We walked the facility, and the goal for us was to be able to highlight something that was a glaring deficiency for us, was that the lack of sanitary and equitable facilities for both boys and girls at Shed Park. Directly between Shed Upper, which is known as Gallagher Field, and Page Field, which is a softball field, we are looking to construct a concession stand and bathroom facility on the premises that will serve, in an ADA-compliant capacity, the general needs of all families, children, and visitors to our park. It’s our goal to obviously make this the best and most accessible version of the park that it can be. What we often see is we have parents on a regular basis pulling kids out of the middle of games, telling us, “I have to run so-and-so home to go to the bathroom because there’s nothing on site.” Just by way of giving some context to it, this project started about six years ago. On the Board of Directors at the time was member, many of the members that are present, but there was also a gentleman by the name of Stephen Bauto. Steve Bauto was a lifelong resident. He taught at Greater Lowell Regional Technical Vocational High School for about 20 years. He was an unbelievable volunteer at Shed Park and an unbelievable asset to Shed Park. It was one of Steve’s visions, along with the collective of all members of the Shed Park Board, that we create a facility that serves the boys, girls, children, families, and friends of the city of Lowell, to make sure that Shed Park serves every single person equally with dignity, safety, and obviously providing the necessary sanitary facilities. It’s our goal right now to be able to raise funds privately, but we did, and we went to the state, and they were able to secure a $50,000 gift to the city to make sure that we use that for expending, to be able to contribute towards the construction project. An earmark was also obtained about five years ago, which is also in the possession of the city, to be able to go towards that project. And as a demonstration of the good faith and the effort that we’re putting forward, we have also privately, through 194 collective donors to date, we have raised $37,500 with the expectation that we will purchase kitchen equipment, patios, everything that’s necessary to make this the best representation of what we want this to be and what we want to see Steve’s fruition come to reality. The bottom line is, Steve Bauto always said to us, said to the players that played for him, the people that worked with him, and his colleagues, both athletically and professionally at Greater Lowell, he said to us, “You’ve got to make sure that you leave it better than you found it.” And we believe that this is exactly what we’re doing. Like I said, Lowell Youth Athletic Association, that means that every single kid that comes across Shed Park, from Centerville, from PYO, which is Pawtucketville, from The Acre, from Belvedere, from the Highlands, from Calery Park, every single person that comes will be able to use this facility, and like I said, access it for purposes of what it’s for, which is for sanitation purposes, for concession stand purposes. And the last part of it is, this project will also enable economic development in the city of Lowell, because one of the precursors of any tournament coming to the city of Lowell is that you have to have sanitary facilities on site. This will allow softball to host tournaments. This will allow baseball to host tournaments. And with that comes people. And with people comes money. And I don’t think that hurts anybody with respect to the businesses and the people of the city of Lowell. So I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I do encourage you to accept and expend this money to make sure that we get this building built, because it’s going to be good for the rest of the people, for the rest of our lives. And like I said, let’s leave it better than we found it. Appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, for being here to speak on that vote. Any other comments or questions from any of the council? Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. I know Centerville Baseball was discussing this last year, getting involved in the unified league citywide, and it just made it easier for scheduling, it made it easier for a lot of things that go on with youth sports. And I’d just like to say, I’m glad to see that it’s the first, they unified all of our youth leagues, and I think that’s great. I think this is great to see, you know, improvements to any open space and providing opportunities to our youth. Maybe one of those opportunities we have to utilize the Spinners Ball Field, especially now that it’s a unified league. Maybe that’s something we discuss in the near future too, for final championship day or something. But congratulations and thank you.
Counselor Gitchia?
Thank you, Mayor Charles. I first want to thank Mr. Durkin for his hard work and all the volunteers who are putting this together. If you’ve ever coached a team in this city and taken them outside of the city to other communities, you’ll understand what they have and what we need to build. And this, I think, is a beginning to start understanding that, you know, we can give the kids of our city a level playing field when it comes to bringing kids in, that they deserve this type of stuff. And Steve Bauto would be amazed by it. He wasn’t one for the limelight, I can tell you that, but he gave everything to the kids. And I just wanted to say thank you to all the volunteers for their hard work, and also State Rep. Vanna Howard.
Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. I just wanted to echo what Counselor Gitchia said. This doesn’t happen without the volunteers and the hours that they put into it, the dedication of the coaches and the parents. And so this is a big step forward for Shed Park, and it’s sorely needed. So thank you very much to everybody involved.
And now the comment. Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I’ll just say that as someone who spends a lot of time at those fields in the spring and summer, this is definitely a need that is being fulfilled. I think I can envision the faces that I see up there when they ask where the nearest bathroom is, when, you know, they have kids playing at the upper Shed Fields, and, you know, when you tell them where it is, there’s always a look of surprise. So this is definitely fulfilling a really important need for the kids that utilize those fields, and it is really the, this has been a long time coming and a lot of hard work from a lot of volunteers to push it this far. So great to see the state helping out through the advocacy of Rep. Howard, and really look forward to seeing this project come to fruition. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments? Here none. Need a motion to adopt by Counselor Mercier, second by Counselor Rourke. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Gitchia?
Yes.
Ten years.
It is now in the seven o’clock hour. We’re going to return back to where we left off on the agenda, which was the General Public Hearings. 4.1 is the ordinance to create a position, Digital Evidence Specialist, LPD. This portion is now open to all those who are in favor. Mr. Clerk, do we have anybody speak in favor? Anybody here speak in favor? Here none. This portion is now closed. We’re now open to all those who oppose. Anyone here to speak in opposition? Here none. This portion is now closed. Any comments or questions by any of the councilors? Here none. Need a motion to adopt by Counselor Noon, second by Counselor Janess. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Charles?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Gitchia?
Yes.
That’s ten years.
We now go to Section 5, which is the Utility Public Hearing. 5.1, Boston Gas, EPA National Grid, request moving gas main at Metacroft Street and Exchange Place to enable work by the city. This portion is now open to all those who are in favor. Open to all those in favor. Anyone here to speak in favor? Here none. That portion is now closed. We’re now open to all those who oppose. Open to anyone who is here to speak in opposition. Here none. That portion is now closed. Any comments or questions by the councilors? Here none. Need a motion to refer to the White Inspector for report and recommendation by Counselor Yem, second by Counselor Rourke. The motion is adopted. There’s an item here, number 5.2. That item has been withdrawn. We now go to the next item, the next section on the agenda, Section 6, Communication from City Manager. These are the motion responses. We’ll start with a motion response, the menorah lighting. Any comments or questions by Counselor Janess or Counselor Leahy? Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I’d just like to say thank you to Peter Crew and everyone else who worked on this, reading this report. There’s quite a few hands involved in this project, and, you know, I’m excited to see this move forward, and I think this will be a great event for the city. So thanks to Case and, you know, everyone else who was involved, Rabbi Bronstein, Jim Shanker, and the various organizations. I think this is going to be a great event for the fall. So thank you, everyone.
Any comment, Counselor Leahy?
No, all set. Thank you.
Great job. Thank you, Peter, for being here. We now go to the next motion response, which is Item B, on Hill Street paving. Is Counselor Scott on?
Oh, she’s talking.
Not, okay. No, that’s great. I also had put the motion on a while back. So in addition to Counselor Scott, I want to thank the administration for continuing to watch the progress of the paving on Hill Street. We now go to...
Your Honor?
Counselor Leahy?
Just a question. So Metacroft Street, through you to the manager or whoever, that’s been fixed or, they fixed at least one, right?
I’m sorry.
Metacroft Street?
Yes.
I believe we fixed the big...
We did, indeed.
All right.
And there are other plans for patching some of the other places as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Gitchia?
Thank you, Mayor Charles. Mr. Manager, through you to the manager, has the paving renewal contract for FY23 been signed for the upcoming season?
Mr. Manager?
Do we know?
I believe that we’re waiting on PJ Keating right now, and I do believe we’re looking at this upcoming season, obviously, for this. Is that what your question is? I apologize.
I’m just wondering, because last week, we pushed off on sidewalk work because it got sent to no man’s land and ended up in August from a March signature. I’m wondering if this fiscal year’s paving renewal contract has been signed, sealed, and it’s already in place? And if it has, could we be provided with a complete list of streets that are going to be done within that timeframe?
I can get that, yes. We could get that done for the next, well, we can actually probably, counsel, get this done maybe this week, if that’s possible. Would have to ask the engineer for that list.
So the contract has been signed?
I don’t know that. I’d have to ask the engineer.
Okay. All right. Could we have that back next week, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Oh, one other question.
Counselor Gitchia?
As I read my notes, they get blurry sometimes. On the city’s website, under the construction page, they have a construction map that hasn’t been updated since August of 2020. Could we have that updated so that we can see 2023’s? The map is just a 2020 map, the project map.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager. Through you to the council. That has been worked on, and we actually have our team fully in place to be helping for that. And I know that Assistant City Manager Rose has that under control at this time, so we will be up to date, hopefully, in the weeks coming.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on that line item? Here now, we now go to the next one. C, motion response on Riley School Playground Repair. Counselor Scott, Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Parks Department responded to the concern and repaired a broken connection for the playground drawbridge. Mission completed. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments? Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to say thank you for the repairs. I just had a request, maybe through the manager and since the commissioner’s here. There’s an open gateway, or an open part of the fence that goes from the playground to the school. And the school department was trying to help out on this. I was just wondering if we could get, if we could help from both sides, just to get a gate there, because during the day when the kids are out at recess, there’s a group of kids that need to be, they’re a little rambunctious, and we’re just looking to put a gate there to keep them controlled, so it’s easier for the staff. So if we could work together with the school department, I know they’re working hard to do it, but it’s been a couple of months, so if we could just check on that and see if we could expedite a gate there.
I’ll pull up in the morning and get back to you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Here now, we now go to the next motion response, D, on the Rock Bridge repairs, which is the support letter. Any comment, Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Managers and your team, for sending the letter to the Transportation Secretary, and not only that, but also the governor and the lieutenant governor. Thank you.
Counselor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the manager, thank you for the great letter to the governor and lieutenant governor and this guy. It’s a great letter, so I hope that will, you know, you can follow up and maybe we get some feedback and some good response. Thank you.
Counselor Gitchia?
Thank you, Mayor Charles. Through you to the city manager, who probably knows this better than anybody. How long does it take usually for a response to your letters to come back in the perfect world?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. Typically, the delegation would get a phone call, or even the city managers, obviously, get a phone call, probably within a couple of weeks, but with the administration being brand-new, this may take a little bit more time in regards to getting their secretariats set. I know that the current governor or governor-elect is still working on positioning all of the secretariats, so I think that’s kind of the number-one thing they’ve been working on, plus obviously the budget that they’re responsible to put together.
So hopefully by construction season, maybe April 15th?
I would hope so. Yes. Yes, Counselor.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Here none. We now go to the next motion response, which is on Safety Net System Program. Counselor Mercier?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did get a response from the superintendent, and I am happy that they’re working on it. I just want to know, and I know that Superintendent Golden is here, he might have more to add to this, which I’m very interested in this, and I’m very pleased to know that they’re on top of this. I just want to say that when it’s fully operational, and they have brochures, leaflets or whatever, if we can inform the public to this, inform this council that the program is ready, because I think it’s a very important program that saves lives, but I know the chief is here. Yes.
Through Mr. Manager, chief?
Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, I did speak with Counselor Mercier prior to the meeting about some of the information in the brochure, so she thought it’d be best that I explained a little bit more of the information, and then as soon as we are fully operational, which our family services unit will be running the equipment, we already have the equipment in place, and they’re reaching out to high-risk people in order to sign some people up for the program, which will need some commitment from the individual families as well in terms of logging, daily activities, making sure that the system works each day, and then changing the batteries every so often. But the equipment that we will be using, it’s called Project Lifesaver, and according to their mission, of the Project Lifesavers, to provide timely response to save lives, reduce potential injury for adults and children with a propensity to wander due to a cognitive condition. How does this system work? The method relies on proven radio technology and specially-trained search and rescue teams, which will be our detectives and family services. Citizens enrolled in the Project Lifesaver are outfitted with a radio frequency transmitter to be worn on the wrist or ankle at all times, looks like a watch. Each transmitter emits an individualized frequency signal that is unique to the client. If enrolled, the client goes missing, the caregiver will notify the Project Lifesaver Member Agency, which would be the Lowell Police, and a trained team will respond to the wanderer’s area with specialized receiver that will help triangulate the direction of the signal and help locate the client. The search times for certified Project Lifesaver agencies have been reduced from hours, potentially days, down to minutes, and recovery time for Project Lifesaver agencies average 30 minutes, which is 95% less time than standard operations without the Project Lifesaver. So we will put this equipment into effect as soon as we have people signed up, and we’ll continue to look at emerging technology, as the motion states, for GPS-type technology that may be available in the future.
That’s great. Yes, thank you very much. That’s great. That's great. It's about saving lives. It isn't about elderly people alone, it's about families that have children, that have Alzheimer's, I mean, you know, that have autism and things like that. So, it's an all-around great program to save lives, and I felt if Chumsford has it, why not us? But thank you for your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
Any other comments, questions? Councilor Robinson?
Thank you. Seeing how this is operated on a radio frequency, I get it, it's something that we have to roll out, but will we still aggressively be pursuing GPS possibilities? Because wouldn't radio frequency really apply in, like, suburban better than urban? Whereas GPS, we already have the towers, we have all of the capabilities. I mean, I know this is something from, I believe, what, 2020, that we received the funding for this program, but I still think GPS would probably be the way to go, and that's something, conversations with quite a few other communities, and it's just, how long is this radio frequency going to be effective and active? What'd you say?
Chief?
Absolutely, Councilor, and that's why we will be looking forward to researching some other equipment as it becomes available. This equipment was available to us from the grant, so the city didn't have to provide any funding at all. So, the whole project will be funded by the grant, so we'll put this into play, and, you know, God forbid, we have to use it. Hopefully, we don't, but we'll continue to move forward and look for other technology and equipment. And GPS is obviously the way of the future, and hopefully, there's some grant funding and some other avenues to purchase some new equipment as it becomes available. And this is a free program for anyone involved in the city.
Excellent, thank you. And maybe that's something, again, we keep an eye open for GPS upgrade, so to say, to a program like this, but thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Here now, thanks so much, Chief, for being here. We now go to the next, did anybody else want to make a comment? Or, everyone all set? We now go to the next motion response, which is on F, fines and tolls, no event of January 23rd. Councilor Kishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Through you to the chief. Chief, thank you first for the response. I don't know that there's ever been a baseline, so I don't know what the baseline should be for each storm. Does it depend on whether it's a large storm, not a large storm? How do we come to these numbers? So, my question would be to you is, do you know how many calls came in for vehicles violating the snow? Because I know that our phones get lit up from people. It was saying, oh, they didn't move their cars, I moved my car, they have a 10-car driveway, no one moved, can you help? Holden Street is one that a person called from. So, I guess my first question would be, you know, is the, do you know how many calls came in?
So, I don't know how many calls actually came into the switchboard. What we do, what we normally put in place is Paul St. Seer and his group, I believe they're called, they have watches out there that drive around, and if there are issues where the plows cannot get down a street, they'll call the police department or call the commanding officer. I know I received several calls from the Assistant City Manager, and he would tell me he received calls, and we would go and move the cars, and I'm sure the commanding officer in the radio room did receive calls as well. You know, parking bans, snow emergencies are something that, you know, there's always that, no, there's no right or wrong. In looking at a storm like this, Councilor, we looked at the, between the city manager's office, the DPW, and the police, what's going to happen in the next few days? You know, if this was a large-scale storm and cold weather over the course of time, you would probably have seen a lot more cars towed off the roadway. Projected weather in the following few days after this storm was to be warming up and then some rain. So, what we do is we talk to the commanding officer, and we try to temper our response to it. We went and we tried to tow cars only where needed. 61 motor vehicles that were moved, and according to Captain Crawford, who was the commanding officer that evening, that was if, let's take Westford Street, for instance, and there were five cars in a row on Westford Street. If they were able to get four people to move their cars by knocking on doors, and the people were able to move their cars and get them off the road so they could be towed, and maybe one or two in that row of cars couldn't be, or someone wasn't reached, or they might live out of town, or whatever the case may be, then those vehicles were towed. We tried to temper our response based on the weather, based on the significance of the storm. You know, and over time, over the course of time, this is always, this is always an issue. You know, there's no right. If your car gets towed, you know, people are going to be upset, and on the flip side, the city Lowell and the DPW and everyone, we have a job to clear the streets so that people can go to and from their homes and to and from work the next day and school, if it may be. You know, you and I had some conversation about what was done in the past, and I talked to the city manager at our weekly meeting, and, you know, my thought was to bring a suggestion, right, to have something to bring forward to the council, and I, you and I had spoken about the old overnight parking ban ordinance, which was disbanded, wasn't truly disbanded in 2012. What they did is they took it off the books, and they were going to see if there was a period of time, if it needed to be modified or brought back, it could be. And my suggestion would be to maybe look at some sort of hybrid to the old ordinance, or utilize the certain category of streets in the city that this council deems necessary that cars need to be moved off every storm. And if there's a parking ban that goes into effect, maybe a hybrid type with the ordinance and a parking ban would dictate that the police department would go tow, or give tickets, or move the cars off of those streets. Secondary streets, you know, there's a lot of streets in this city where there is no more parking, you know, take Back Central, for instance, and that's always a concern. The streets are small, but, you know, there's not a lot of driveways in that area. So, those areas, unless it was a major storm and the plows couldn't get by, we normally wouldn't tow the cars. There's other areas of the city as well. So, we try to temper our response, but if people do call, if the city or the plows or neighbors call and say that there's an issue with those type of parking issues, we would definitely respond, and if we have to move them, we'll move. If we can get them to move, even better. But maybe, Councilor Kishia and I spoke about maybe looking at revisiting this ordinance in some capacity and taking it to a transportation subcommittee or something, if the council so wished, to look at it and maybe come up with a suggestion so that everyone can be happy moving forward. And there'll be less ambiguity in terms of what the police response and the city response would be moving forward with parking ban emergencies. Come up with, like, a citywide protocol for it.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to send this to the traffic subcommittee, because that's where it originated from back in 2012. It got transferred over, the ordinance got changed, and they said it should have been revisited in one of the memos back then, if it wasn't really working up. It's just, when you have the plow drivers out there, and they're working overnight, and these vehicles aren't moved, it gets to be tough for them. So, I do think, I'd like to make a motion to send this to the traffic subcommittee.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilor Kishia, that's a transportation subcommittee, you mean, second by Councilor Nune on safety, I oppose say no, the eyes have it, motion is carry. On this motion response, Councilor Nune?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the chief. Chief, thank you for the report. The report really, you know, summarized a number of car being towed, number of car being ticketed and moved. Do we know which or what district this breakdown of number of car tow, ticket, or move?
I don't have that, but that's something that I could get from the individual tow sheets and/or citations from the parking clerk.
Thank you, Chief. If you could, you know, submit it at the next traffic subcommittee meeting. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Here none. Thank you, Chief, for being here. We'll now go to, you might be here for the next few motion responses. Actually, I'm not sure.
Thank you.
The next motion response is on the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. Any comment, Councilor Nune?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the managers, and I think Chief Sharon, probably, oh, Chief Sharon's here, thank you. Thank you for the report, Chief. I believe the report indicated that the most recent update of this plan, the emergency management plan, was back in 2019. I believe I got the report, and I believe it was a 90-something-page report on this. Subsequent to this motion response, or the motion I filed back into December 7 of last year, I filed another motion, which is dated, I believe, December 20. The motion asked for, this is subsequent to an incident with the Lowell Housing Authority. The motion asked for city manager provide, city council with a report detailing response protocol for emergency disaster event, something like what took place at the Lowell Housing Authority building. Further reports said, report include information relative to feedback provided by resident on where the improvement can be made to set the protocol. If I could have that report, and when we have that report, if I may ask, that gets sent to the subcommittee, Public Safety Subcommittee, so that we can have further discussion on it, Mr. Mayor? Thank you.
Councilor Nune, you referred this to the Public Safety Subcommittee?
Yes, sir.
Second by Councilor Rook. Motion is adopted. You done with the comment, that, Councilor Rook?
Thank you. When this motion was first filed, it was asked to go to a subcommittee, and then the response came, I contacted the clerk, and I believe it'll be next Tuesday at 5:30.
Right. Councilor Kishia?
Mr. Mayor, through you to the chief or to the city manager, how many times a year does the emergency management team meet?
Mr. Manager or the chief? Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. At the time, we meet usually about every month.
Currently, that's what I'm talking about. Right now, how many, is it once a month?
About once a month.
So, they've met for the last 12 months, once a month?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no other comments? Thank you, Chief, for being here. We now go to the next motion response, which is the alphabet H on fire vehicles, ARPA 2023. Three councilors put a motion on this, Councilor Rook, Councilor Scott, Councilor Kishia, which one? I'll go first, Councilor Rook.
Yeah, I just, while we have, the chief has a quick overview, it'd be great. Thank you.
Chief?
Okay, so, the Lowell Fire Department is entertaining two fire apparatus manufacturers. Those two companies have gone through a process with us first, dealing with our apparatus committee, which was formed in November. The apparatus committee, led by one of my chiefs, who was the one dealing with fleet and maintenance issues, was responsible for establishing what the vehicle standards would be for our three different types of apparatus that we wish to purchase. After that took place, we had meetings with the apparatus manufacturers and entertained demonstrations of their equipment. We then asked for engineered drawings from their engineering staff for each firm, and have since reviewed those engineered drawings to find out that we were able to meet the standards from both manufacturers to a certain degree. And after that particular point, we finalized the arrangements and asked for full proposals. We didn't have those proposals in hand when I first did this motion, but we actually now have both of them in hand. Later on this week, we'll begin a full review process with the hope of awarding a contract and encumbering the money by the end of this month.
Councilor Kishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Through you to the chief. There's one line in the report that I really questioning. It says, "The intent of the process to purchase five to seven engine pumpers and two to three ladder trucks." In the ARPA outline that Manager Golden put forth, the engines, we had the 1999, which is engine one, three, four, five, seven, and two, were all going to be replaced. And then the ladders were, ladder one, three, and the spear. And I actually would like to see six, 11, and four done, but in that proposal that you have, how many are going to be replaced, and which ones?
So, based on the proposals that we had put out, we originally were going to do five engines and two ladders. It seems like the proposals made by the companies allow us to have a little bit more leeway than that, which will allow us to do a replacement of seven engines and three ladder trucks.
When was that proposal put out?
We just received their proposals last week. We received one of them, and we just received the other at the top of this week.
When was the RFP written?
It was an RFP, it's HGAC financing.
So, who outlined five and two, when we've been told all along it was seven and three? How did it get to those numbers is more my question, but you're saying it's going to be satisfied, no matter what. Do we, so, if the city decided to add two more engines and one more ladder, would it still fit within the proposal?
Beyond the seven and three?
Yeah.
No, it would not. The original plan called for five and two and the replacement of a whole series of support vehicles, and as it was reviewed by the apparatus committee, we thought it was better to try to get the larger pieces of the fleet replaced as early as possible with the ARPA money, and that's how we bumped it up to the seven and three.
I guess I didn't hear the date of when the five and two were actually put out, or would that be something for the manager to answer? I didn't hear that date, because all along, we were told seven and three. So, I don't know how it got put out at five and two unless it was prior to the manager, because it's written in his, ARPA proposal was seven and three. It outlined all of these vehicles, so I don't know, did it go out after the ARPA outline? I don't know how, it's confusing to me how we got to five and two, or where that number came from. So, now, we can't even back into the other three if we wanted to under this. But my question is, where did the five and two come from?
Do you want to?
And what was the date it came in?
Mr. Manager, do you have a common addition to that, or?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. The five and two, was that the original plan? Because if we recall, we had money that was changed over, we increased it. This council actually gave the authority to increase that from, and I want to say, $6 million to $10 million. Were we thinking five and two beforehand? And then the ARPA proposal that I know that was put forth here was for 10 vehicles, 10 units.
Could you give us the date, when you get to your office, on when the five and two, actually, this whole thing was sent out? That's my question, is when was this all sent out? Because all along, it was seven and three, I think, at the council. Correct me if I'm wrong, that's what I believe we always want at that point. I just wonder the date, because if there's extra funding left over, can we go over the seven and three? Because right now, no matter what anybody thinks in this council chamber right now is that you're still left over with three vehicles that are 2010. So, when these are delivered, you're still going to have three vehicles that do not meet your own fire standards. If we got them in the ARPA money right now, we can actually have a direct savings to the taxpayer in the future, if they're purchased under this. And that's what we're, at least what I'm saying to you is that the 2010s should have been included in this package, because at the end of the day, this city's still not meeting its requirements in the end, with the 2010s that are going to be left over when the new ones are delivered. They're going to be 15 years or 15 years plus at that point. So, my question was, how do we get all of this together? As I've spoken to the manager and also the CFO about this multiple times, saying, look, you're going to be behind the eight ball right away. We're already raising taxes, so now, back to the tax base, at the end, is going to be these three vehicles, they're going to be already obsolete when we get to that stage. So, I'm just trying to realize how we're going to ask the taxpayers for more money when we could have bought these through ARPA if it was available.
Thank you. Councilor Kishia asked for a report, which her manager will try to get that for us. Right now, I think Councilor Rook has a comment or question?
Yeah, so, the bottom line is, we're getting 10 altogether.
Bottom line is, we're getting 10.
Right, so, I'm not, you know, and secondly, you know, we can't tell the manager how to spend any of the ARPA money, but, no, neither here nor there. Is it 10 trucks that we're getting, is that the allotment of the $10 million that the manager put towards the fire trucks?
That is correct. It is utilizing the $10 million that was earmarked for the fire department to buy apparatus.
And those 10 trucks, $10 million, is anything left over? Are we over, are we under?
It will be, it will end up being under, but there will be some upfitting when the apparatus comes, so we want them to come with certain pieces of equipment. So, we'll be trying to utilize that little extra bit to get things on the trucks, for example, hoses, specialty, any specialty equipment, the install of the radios, ladders, things of that nature, that would not normally come with a fully stripped truck.
Okay. So, the last time in front of us, we, you know, we were told 10 apparatus, fire trucks, and that's what you're telling us tonight that we're getting?
We're getting 10 pieces of apparatus. That is correct.
Right, thank you.
Councilor Kishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. The bottom line is simple. Past councilors haven't done their job. That's why we're in this setting with- That's why we're in this setting with these engines. Whether you tell the manager to spend ARPA money or anything, at the end of the day, this council is responsible for the taxes afterwards, and the taxes will have to pay for these extra vehicles. And we have an outlet that we can subsidize this. So past councils have not met the demands of this department, and that's why we need 10 right now, plus three. If they would have done their job back then, and we would offset it that way, we wouldn't have to do this.
Counselor Gishia, I want to you not to point your finger at any prior.
I didn't point my finger at you. I'm pointing it right at.
At the council, whether it's me, I'm not even thinking about myself or any of the.
Mayor Chow, I have the right to speak my mind on this floor, whether you like it or you don't. The words are consistent with the way the spending went. They're factual. These trucks are out of date right now.
Counselor Gishia, if I could ask you.
Mayor Chow, you don't have the right to do that.
I'm not, I'm not stopping you from making.
You are, you're trying to inhibit my freedom of speech. And I'm telling you.
Not to refer to any particular previous council that have done a fantastic job of serving the city as you are now, as the rest of us now as well. Okay, thank you, Counselor. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Counselor, thank you, Chief, for being here. All right, we now will go to the next item, motion response, which is on the IRA and infrastructure. Counselor Drinkwater and Counselor Gishia, who would like to go first? Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a really outstanding motion response. It really looks like we have been right on top of these grant opportunities that have come in through these pieces of federal legislation, the Inflation Reduction Act, and the bipartisan infrastructure bill. So, you know, the response shows that, you know, we have a grant application prepared to do, to seek energy savings on 10 different schools, which is outstanding to see. I did have one question, and the response refers to the fact that the Inflation Reduction Act is a little bit more recent and still kind of being unpacked in terms of the various grant programs and taxing incentives included in there. And there is a paragraph that lists a number of different programs that are being looked at in there. There was one that at least appears to me to sort of fit pretty directly with the types of projects that we're targeting under the Renew America Schools Grant, and that is a tax credit, I think referred to as the 179D tax credit, that had previously been made available for private commercial buildings, but under the Inflation Reduction Act is a credit that has been now extended to public buildings, and as well as making the credit more generous specifically for projects that will enhance energy efficiency as we're seeking to do through these school projects. So I'm not necessarily expecting an answer right now, because I know we're looking at the Inflation Reduction Act, although I do see the Energy Manager has approached the microphone, so maybe there's some insight. But I was just curious of whether this tax credit, which rather than being something that is applied for, but is rather actually money coming back to municipalities as long as the project shows energy savings, if that might be something that's able to be used in tandem with these school projects that we're applying for grant funding, or possibly, you know, if we're not fully funded on this, if the 179D tax credit is something that would, could, you know, make up for funding so we can still pursue them. So through you, Mr. Mayor, the manager, Assistant Manager or the Energy Manager, just was wondering if that, that tax credit might be something that we're looking at too.
Thank you.
Last person to answer all these questions, Ms. Moses?
Thank you so much for the question, Counselor Drinkwater. I believe that that's a really important source of additional funding that's available through the Inflation Reduction Act. There are a number of opportunities within the Inflation Reduction Act to allow us as a city to take advantage of things we haven't been able to take advantage of before. There are a number of items within the Department of the Treasury that previously would have been tax cuts, tax write-offs for private developers that now you can utilize as a municipality through the direct pay provisions. We're still trying to wait on guidance from the Treasury. There's some guidance around portions of it, but rest assured, it's something that we're going to be continuing to watch and pursue and allow our funds to go even further. So thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you very much, and very enthused by that response. And once again, I really, from what I'm hearing, we're, we're very much out front in pursuing these opportunities that have been, been made available. I don't think every, every city in town is as prepared as we've been in preparing these, so that's really great to hear. And the only thing I'll add is there is a reference in here to essentially forming a consortium to strengthen the grant applications that involves different, you know, whether it be community groups or, you know, organizations that can kind of contribute to achieving energy savings or, you know, be a partner on the grant. And, you know, just to throw in one other issue that I've probably brought up a number of times before, but if we can find a way to, as part of this consortium, involve local people and connecting them with the jobs that'll be created through these, through these investments, through apprenticeship, pre-apprenticeship, I know that's something that the Inflation Reduction Act and Infrastructure Bill kind of highlight and push to be included in these types of projects. So just want to say, yeah, I know that's going to be something that's kind of formulated as the official grant application moves forward. So if that's something that we can encourage and include and make sure we're connecting people from the community into career pathways to hopefully work on these projects, that would be a great thing to, to look at as well. So that's all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments? Counselor Gishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. The, how does this affect our solar footprint? I didn't read really much about the solar footprint within all of this. Is there solar, a solar footprint impacted by any of this, or is any of this going to be put towards that?
So that's an excellent question as well, and that's a provision of the IRA that they're still working on guidance around some of the solar things. As with the energy efficiency, there are certain tax types of tools that previously private developers could take advantage of that can now be passed along to the city. One of the things that we're looking at specifically with the Renew America School Grant, the $15 million grant that we've submitted a concept for, a concept paper for, is to try and get our buildings essentially solar ready. My background is actually in energy engineering with a solar concentration, and the first thing they teach you as you're studying solar engineering is hit efficiency first. And so as we make these buildings very efficient, we're going to be able to right-size the solar arrays for that. I know there's also a motion that had been referred to Subcommittee for Finance and Technology and Utilities, which we can kind of break out our solar strategy a little bit more, but one of the things that we learned from the request for information that we put out in the fall is that our infrastructure is not ready to develop more solar yet. We need to have roof structures that are more, pardon me, more aligned with the age and duration of the solar panels. As part of the Renew America Schools Act, we actually have put in requests for funding to create those solar-ready roof structures for properties where we believe we have solar potential. So we are still working on the solar, but it's kind of putting the infrastructure in place first through the projects we've done through MSBA and things that we're looking to do further. There are also additional grant programs that I'll be looking to see how those are structured, and those might also have additional potential to help us to develop the infrastructure to support the solar and then have the solar to help us continue to reduce our carbon footprint and reduce our energy costs.
So it sounds like our solar imprint's going to be pushed off for a while, because we have a long time before these are going to be any energy-efficient buildings. So it sounds like, what is your timeframe before you think that solar is actually going to be installed and ready up and running? It seems like if we're going to make some of these buildings efficient, it's going to take a long time for that to happen. So, and if we're basing solar off of that, then it seems to me like it's going to be some time away before we see reductions from solar.
I think you can actually start sooner rather than later in terms of if you have the infrastructure there, and that's the main thing, is the infrastructure needs to be there to support the solar. We do have, I believe, over the last few years, we've done some projects through the MSBA, and we currently have projects going through the MSBA to get those solar-ready roof structures. So those would be what I would consider phase one, potential places to look at. That would be as, of course, building around the construction that's currently happening at Lowell High School. That roof has been constructed on the gem to be solar-ready. It'll be the same thing on the freshman academy. The challenge there, we'll be working around the current construction schedule. You also have McCullough, that's one of the 10 schools that we put in here. There's a new structure through that. McAvenue Robinson, there's a number of things that we've already done in a lot of these schools and things that we're still continuing to do. So I would see those as sort of a phase one. Phase two are things that we could probably get if we're successful in getting this $15 million, which would be Daly, Merklin, STEM. And then there are another additional, we believe, five properties, both on the municipal side of things and on the school side of things, where as we build out the infrastructure, we'll be able to integrate solar into that. But I think a lot of the provisions through the Inflation Reduction Act and some of the funding that's available through that will allow us to do that in a reasonable timeframe. Stay tuned for more information at the Subcommittee when it's scheduled.
Okay, so your timeframe on stage one, what do you think? We'll see the first solar panels go on a building?
Well, of course, that always has to do with the challenges.
Roughly.
That might be encountered in the supply chain issues, but barring any major supply chain issues, I would say within the next two years, we would probably be able to get some phase one projects created.
Okay, thank you.
Possibly sooner.
Thank you.
I'm going to have Mr. Manager, would like to make comment first?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. Counsel, once again, Ms. Moses and I have been talking about this. One of our major challenges throughout the city is infrastructure. Not that the infrastructure is, is poor, it's not ready for the weight of what is currently the solar panels that are up there in the infrastructure. So in a former life, being in telecommunications, utility, and energy, there are things that are coming down, which we would hope are going to make these panels actually more like a film, and if that were to happen, I think we would be moving a heck of a lot quicker. But once again, the infrastructure is fine, but it wasn't just designed for some of the weight. People will look at garages and assume that we can just put a canopy on that, but the infrastructure of that particular garage may not be able to handle the, the weight of those panels and the infrastructure that's needed. So those are some of the challenges I believe Ms. Moses is talking about.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. Two quick questions. So I'm hearing the new construction at the high school will be able to accommodate projects like this in the future, once we get to that point? That's excellent. Thank you for that.
That is correct, Counsel.
Would this be better served, referred to the same Subcommittee that's already scheduled to bring this into that same conversation that happens at that time? In, in your opinion? So can I make the motion, if it's okay with the maker of this motion, to refer this also to the Subcommittee that's already scheduled regarding the solar? I believe it's Counselor Drinkwater and then Counselor Gishia, so if you wouldn't object.
Some of. Make a motion.
Okay, so what, what's the Subcommittee that's already?
I believe the most recent referral was to a joint finance and technology and utility Subcommittee.
Okay, so the motion on the floor would be to refer this, our response to that Subcommittee as well?
That was seconded by Counselor Drinkwater, or that motion is adopted. Counselor Yam?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Ms. Moses. I read with interest under the Inflation Reduction Act, the second paragraphs talked about there are provision in the IRA that can allow for enhanced tax incentive and payment mechanism for solar energy and development. There are also grants with the IRA that might be relevant to Lowell, including but not limited to greenhouse gas reduction fund grants, commercial clean vehicle credit, alternative fuel vehicle refuel property credit, environmental and climate justice block grant. And here's my, my favorite part would be the clean heavy-duty vehicle diesel emission reduction grant. Are these funding coming in a form of grant? Will the cities and town like Lowell benefit from that? That's the first question. If, if it is, would it be possible that we look into replacing some of the city vehicle with a electric vehicle or the hybrid to reduce the, you know, carbon footprint? And I'm, I'm going toward the EV fire truck that I always, you know, lobby for, so.
Ms. Moses?
Thank you for the question, Counselor Yam. I know that you are very passionate about electrifying our vehicle fleet, and I share that enthusiasm as well. We actually have a number of steps that, or in a number of tools at our disposal to look into those types of things. I'm going to be monitoring the grant programs as they come available. If the infrastructure bill and kind of the timeline of the grants and the timeline of how these things get processed out is similar, it will likely be a year and a year and a half out before we actually see some of these grant programs to come to fruition. Of course, I have a spreadsheet for that. I have an idea of exactly, you know, when we might see these kinds of things in terms of the quarter, the year. I monitor grants.gov on a regular basis, so those are things that we'll be looking into. Another tool that we have signed on to over the last few years, the utilities have also started to take a higher, a greater interest in creating EV charging infrastructure as well as fleet electrification efforts. Lowell is currently a part of the fleet advisory program that the utilities have, where they can take our vehicles and they can do the analysis for you, see which vehicles there are viable replacements for, see which vehicles might, or qualify for some of these funding sources. They do a total cost of ownership analysis for you on those types of things. So as we start to move towards that, in their current, they also just, the Department of Public Utilities also recently ruled on the next generation of the EV charging program for the utilities. They're still developing guidance around this, but at a high level, I think there are going to be additional opportunities to make sure that as we convert our fleets, we also have the infrastructure to be able to support those fleets, to support charging. There are also some other community-wide opportunities through that and also through some of the funding through the inflation, or actually, it's in the bipartisan infrastructure law that can help us, you know, continue to build that out as a community as well. So those are things that we're continuing to look, monitor, and actively seek opportunities for.
Just, just.
Good, Counselor Yam?
Thank you, Ms. Moses. Just the last comment in conversation with Chief, Fire Chief Charon, he was talking about not just the electric vehicle fire truck, but also the infrastructure that the city firehouse need. So I'm thinking with this grant also built in, like we were talking about, you know, a firehouse with a charging station that fit to accommodate the electric fire truck. It's just a thinking ahead, and it looks like the Inflation Reduction Act is, can benefit the fire department in retro outfit the firehouse to meet that charging station needed.
Yeah, it, it might be a little bit more challenging. I don't know, depending on where you would put your chargers and the electrical service that's needed, and, you know, that could be an ongoing conversation as we develop these types of things. But I do know that I think the biggest opportunity is to build out that infrastructure. There are opportunities in the different grant programs that are laid out, but I think the bigger opportunities are probably the Massachusetts programs that are managed by the utilities, and we do have a strategic partnership with National Grid. So we do have resources available to us to learn about these opportunities and to really take advantage of them as they come up.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Counselor Janes?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd just like to say thank you so much to everyone in the, in the administration who worked on this response. I think it's a, it's a fantastic response with, with a bunch of great information, and I look forward to the detailed discussion that we'll have at the Subcommittee meeting. But I also just wanted to thank you, the, your knowledge on this stuff is incredible. Every time you're here talking to us about grant programs and energy opportunities, I'm amazed at your depth of knowledge, so I just wanted to say thank you so much for being here and what you're doing for us. Your, your work really benefits the city and every resident in it, and I just wanted to say thank you.
No other comments? Thank you, Ms. Moses, for being here. We're now moved. We're now moved on to the next motion response, which is on Central Street. Council Janes, any comment or question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd also like to thank the administration for this response and for putting up the signs around the crosswalk and as well as the no turn on on red sign. I think those are good improvements to to that intersection. I also do understand how the intersection is functioning at a reduced capacity by nature of the fact that there's only one lane in each direction now, as opposed to the two northbound lanes that it would have in normal operation. However, I feel like we're still not in a great spot with the with the no left turn onto Market Street. And the reason I say that is every time I go through this intersection, I see at least one, if not two, three, four, five cars make that left turn. I really think that we need to take a look at this again and consider either having an exclusive phase that allows the left turns or better no, the no left turns there, because we're setting up an expectation where somebody might be coming south on Central Street expecting to go straight through that intersection and have someone turn unexpectedly and cause an accident. I think there's a potential here for for heading that off at the pass. Another consideration might be to possibly restrict that left turn, but only at certain hours, maybe during the morning rush hour and not all day. In the evenings, at night, that left turn seems to be not a problem, and people making that left don't seem to be causing any kind of backup, so I think that's something that we may want to consider. I feel like moving the traffic particularly onto Middle Street for that left turn motion with the cobblestones on Middle and then Shattuck, I worry about the increased volume of traffic on those streets and what it might do to those cobblestones. The ones on Shattuck are already not in great shape, and I don't know if the more we force people to make a left turn there, you know, the traffic's going to increase there. I don't know what that's going to do to those cobblestones, so I think that's like needs to be a consideration on this restriction as well. And if we are going to restrict it, we really need to take the sign down that says turn left to get to the garage right under the sign that says you can't turn left. That is a completely confusing thing for any motorist. And obviously, this this intersection is well known by people, have been using it for years, so the fact that you can't take a left turn now and just having those two left no left turn signs, I I really think people just don't see the signs. So I I'd like to ask that we put some more eyeballs on this and and really think about it. Thank you.
Council Noor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I do echo Council Janes' comment. I do, I too do concern about it as well, and the impact it has on the businesses on Market Street. So you either be maybe have to take a look at it again, and also if you do restrict left turn, then maybe certain hour, so that it does not impact, you know, the businesses on Market Street as much during the business hour. So appreciate it. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions on this motion response? Here, we now go to the next motion response, which is on signal changes. Any comments or question, Council Robinson?
Just thank you very much, and I look forward to what Mass DOT comes back with. Anytime adjustments that could help ease the burden of vehicle traffic over there during peak hours would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
No other comments or questions? We now go to the next and the last motion response on stop signs. Any comments or question by anyone? Council Rook?
Yeah, Council Scott said great motion response.
Thank you for that, Council Rook. No other comments or questions? We now go to the next item on the agenda is the 6.2 informational report. The first one, there are two reports. The first one is ARPA. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Flynn?
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, to the council. So what was provided was a summary of sorts of both the projects that have been undertaken to date related to ARPA, as well as an overall sort of summary of the spending and whatever existing encumbrances are in place. And this is all as of the end of last calendar year, 12/31/22. The council had asked that this something be presented on a quarterly basis, so this is to provide that update to you. And going forward, we'll be doing something similar when we tie, excuse me, when we tie out our quarterly reporting to the Treasury, which happens at the end of every month following the end of a quarter. So our last reporting period ended on the January 31st.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you to Mr. Flynn. I really appreciate this report. There's a lot of great info in here that really goes through, you know, getting the ball rolling on a lot of this stuff and and where we're spending the money. I wonder if you you might be able to just take a couple of quick minutes just to kind of fill the public in on on some of the the bigger projects that we've we've expended this past quarter, just so people understand where where this money's going right now. Thank you.
Certainly. So some of these are events that have taken place over the course of the last year. We spent over $310,000 on like COVID testing kits back early in 2022, a year ago. A lot of initiatives and a lot of funding has been put in place for water and sewer infrastructure improvements, whether that is addressing water mains or sewer lines, but also a fair number of pieces of equipment. Some have arrived. I believe that the video inspection vehicle is actually at the the water wastewater facility now. But we also have other equipment in place, which is like a VACON unit, if anyone's familiar with those, it helps clean out sewer lines and so forth. Those are on order, we're expecting those to come in sometime later this year. There is services that are in here related to the, excuse, the bookmobile that's been ordered for the library. I believe that that is due to come in sometime in the next two or three months. And then there's been money that's been put into sort of the public services of what we do with related to like the like City of Lights Parade, the Folk Festival, Winterfest, which is upcoming. Services that we provide to make sure that those events run smoothly, that there's proper sanitation, proper security, et cetera.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Certainly.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank you for the report because it really is very transparent, and I think that's what people want to know, because every time you turn around, people say there's no money spent in the ARPA money and, you know, we're delaying, delaying, delaying. And I think it's important that we highlight where the direct savings are in a lot of cases for rate payers and taxpayers, because as you look at the Vector, the two Vector trucks that you have on order, there are direct savings to the rate payer in equipment because they need them. There's no way around it. They're old and they're relics. And also, you have the vacuum hydro excavator, the vehicle there, and that's a big savings for the wastewater where we're upside down right now in both of those accounts. And this is big, big savings for those for future rates increases. So I think that these are great purchases. One of them that really stood out to me was a rodent one. I don't know why, don't ask me why, but there's a lot of money in it and there's hardly any spent, and I'm just wondering if that's going to tail off or if that maybe was spent and not included in this report yet. But most of them are very, you know, MIS. You got you got a lot of offsets to the actual general budget now that the Shell game can be moved the other way, and that's what the important piece is of this money. It's it's not to send it out and then have to track it through a second entity, because that's where the work's going to come in for your group, is once we give this out to a second entity, now that's got to be tracked to make sure it's spent a certain way, where if we spent it on things like fire trucks, we could track it very easily and it's a direct saving. So I I am very impressed by the transparency. I think it's really good for the public to see, and I hope it continues. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I may, there was a
Mr. Flynn?
You had mentioned the the rodent control. One of the items that came up as a result of the pandemic was the fact that there was an increased number of rats and other infestations. So this is a program that was put in place to directly address that issue that the council had brought back in, I want to say, the end of last calendar year.
You also, Council Getchea? We go to Council Noor and then Council Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the managers and maybe directly to Mr. Flynn. I thank you for the report. I like it very much when you spend things, spend the money, and then you give a really descriptive as to what you're spending on. Question on the downtown revitalizations, and you spent $38,000 and there's no description as to what you spent on. Could you tell me, tell us?
So, yes, sir, counselor. Those were funds that were spent last summer as part of an effort to sort of beautify downtown. It was a first of sort of a first step in the process of getting new street lighting in place or repainting certain areas, getting sidewalks cleaned, if I remember correctly. So it was sort of a a catchall to address some of the issues that were in the downtown area, to try to sort of clean it up and make it, essentially make it ready for the Folk Fest.
So the total of spending to date is about $14 million, and a huge chunk of it is on the revenue replacement, particularly on parking, water and wastewater, I believe, is close to $8 million, right? And then so, and the rest, the remain big chunk of money to some of the vehicle, like Vicon and so on. So a lot of the money spent to date, it basically is on the infrastructure, particularly on the the this, the revenue replacement and the water and sewer.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So again, I'd like to echo my colleagues as far as the descriptions on this, and I look forward to more of these. With the ARPA funding, I have a motion coming up dealing with more pest control issues. And and so ARPA funding can be utilized in in some areas dealing with rodent pest controls and different things along those lines?
They are, counselor. In the in the, for the example that I had talked about with Council Getchea, that was a direct result of the pandemic. So we were able to use ARPA funding to address that specific need because it addressed a public health sort of crisis or situation that was a result of the pandemic. For future, for another sort of, sort of outlay of or funding for rodent or pest control, it would have to address one of the other categories that is predefined by the Treasury. So if it's like a negative economic impact as a result of the pandemic to a certain population, we'd have to figure out how to sort of fit it into that framework, which I'd be more than happy to talk to anyone, yourself or anyone else from from Centerville, for example, on how we could potentially do that. That being said, not every idea or not every project would be eligible, because it has to pass that test first. So the Treasury has to recognize it as being eligible, and then from there, we move forward.
Thank you very much.
Council Yam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to Mr. Moses. Again, I just want to say thank you, like my colleague said about the extensive the report. Is this report has to be approved by the Treasury? Or is already being approved by the Treasury?
So the the summary that you see that has the the sort of the blue highlight, that grid or that table, is the 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 feed that I, it's a summary of what I've reported to the Treasury. So there's no formal approval. It is a process where we report our activities, our spending, our obligations, and then we certify that these are accurate. And once it's submitted, then I can download this report and I can present it to the council. But there is no approval that I get back from the Treasury saying, you know, these are all eligible, congratulations.
Right, right. But that's just my question. I don't want a Treasury come back, say, hey, you spent something, it's not part of the ARPA, so, but I, we trust you. I'm just asking the question, so.
I hope so. I'm doing the best I can. The goal is to be overly cautious and be very sort of scrutinize all of our expenses to make sure that they do fall into that those eligibility parameters. And that's what I try to do with every single expense that we, that goes through the ARPA program.
Any other comments from any other council? Council Yam?
May I just one last question, sir? I saw in here the 500,000 for the service update, sewer mains across the city. Are those, these are the money that replaced, I saw the big cast iron tube along Vonam Ave and then Pataket Boulevard, you know, right now road all under construction, replacing those pipe?
I can't answer that, but I believe.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. Council, that's an SRF fund that our folks over in wastewater were, were very fortunate that they went after that. So that that actually happened through the normal course of business here in the city.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Flynn.
Thank you so much, Mr. Flynn, for being here as well. The next informational report is on social media. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Ms. Mayor, through you. Mr. Clerk is, oop, sorry about that. Mr. Fernandez is on the Zoom.
Yes, Mr. Manager, I am.
Mr. Fernandez?
Thank you, Mr. Manager, through you to the council. I appreciate this opportunity to chat about how we can leverage some of the best practices that have been learned following the pandemic across the country in terms of how to better provide community updates throughout the city. The city of Lowell as a .gov domain does benefit from carrying considerable weight of the credible source of information. That's something that many organizations wound up having to leverage in order to get information out during the pandemic. And some of the best practices that have been shared across the country as a result of that kind of come back to how to provide information, community updates, to constituents, voters, supporters throughout the city around common interests, causes, issues and events. This memo outlines a recommendation that, again, is a best practice that's currently being looked at across the country in different municipalities to look at social media to do that. There are many different types of social platforms out there. We are looking at leveraging the Facebook social media platform, specifically looking at the groups tools that are available through Facebook. We believe that using those group tools, we'll be able to specifically focus attention at neighborhoods as well as out at the operational elements of the city. So if we look at things from a neighborhood perspective, an example in the memo is where I live, Pataketville District 1 and 4, having a group that different members of the organization can post information to, whether it's information about construction, traffic, paving, events, et cetera. But being able to focus that on to the neighborhood audience, so that folks that are looking for vetted information that's reliable can go to one place to get it. Yes, the website is certainly one of the tools that can be leveraged, but we're looking at social media and the tools that are available through social media to expand that presence organizationally. We are then looking at operational elements, like when we talk about hiring practices in the city and trying to get the word out to hire unemployment opportunities area or an area related to the ARPA funding or an area specific to waste and recycling, et cetera. And we're hoping that by leveraging these free readily available tools in Facebook, it'll just really help us provide some verifiable information across the, across the city, allowing folks to have one place to go to. One of the problems that we've had, and it came up during the pandemic, was as employees have come and gone throughout the city, at times we've had pages, Facebook pages or other social media pages that have been abandoned or orphaned. So we're looking at, we've been working very hard on retaking ownership of them, but we're looking at taking and moving them into groups so that we can manage them in the future in a sustainable way. I'm welcome to answer any questions that you might have.
We'll start with Council Robinson?
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank you for this report, this idea, this thought. I like the specialized approach. I think it makes total sense. At the same time, I think we're putting the cart before the horse, though. I think we struggle, as is, with comms. I think before we start trying to juggle multiple social media sites, and I mean, I'm speaking from my own experience, I manage one social media site, and it's a workload, especially a city our size that has so much information to to put out regularly in multi languages. So I think before we start considering, I know this is a free service technically, but before we start before we start considering juggling five, six different social media accounts, we might want to take a hard look at establishing a comms department. I think, I think that's something desperately needed. I think we've all had the conversations over the, over the past year. Maybe it's something we look at and we, we try to staff up over the course of a couple budget cycles because, um, we're, we're looking at information sharing, information outreach, multiple languages, uh, specialized detailed information when we start breaking it down by districts, neighborhoods, all, all these things. It's, it's, it's great and it's desperately needed, but to accomplish it and be successful at it, I think we need to crawl before we try to run. And, and, and I think we still have some technology components that, that have been long overdue, that we're still waiting on, like the three-one-one system, the city school program. I mean, a, a lot of this stuff is great. Technology lessens the, the burden for all of us and, and, and I'm all for it, but let's not kid ourselves, without a solid comms department, a lot of these ideas aren't really possible because our employees are pretty much flat out as is. So to expect one or two employees to run the comms as is and balance everything else they're already tasked with, I don't think it makes sense. Um, thank you very much.
Councilor Janes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first, I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Fernandez and, and the administration for putting this forward. I think it's, it's a good idea and we're going in the right direction here. But, you know, I, I fully agree with what Council Robinson said. Um, the comms department is something we've talked about before, Mr. Manager. Um, I think it makes a whole lot of sense and I think that trying to go down this road is great, um, but it is, it is going to be a human problem at the end of the day. Who's, who's going to be actually sitting there posting this stuff, um, and going back and forth with it? And I wonder if the best way to go forward here is to do a small kind of proof of concept. Maybe we just create one or two groups for now and really kind of lean into it, see how much effort it really takes. And from there, we can figure out how to scale up, um, to a comms department, team, whatever. And also I want to make sure that, you know, as we're doing this, uh, we, we really keep in mind the various technical abilities, uh, within the city, um, in terms of residents, you know, I don't want us to be too reliant on one tool. I think that just sets us up for all our eggs in one basket type of scenario. And also just, you know, keeping in mind different languages, um, as we try to push this information out, obviously that's a little difficult to do if you have, you know, one specific group that is mostly in English and occasionally you post something in Kamai or Spanish or whatever. But it's just something to keep in mind and I, I do agree that a comms department, um, is probably going to be the way to go at the end of the day here, so. But I thank you for, for bringing this forward and, and looking at it and working to get this ball rolling. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. Um, Council, as I couldn't agree more, uh, but most of you know, uh, without the assistance of Mr. Fernandez, thank you very much for all the hard work he has been giving to us. But we also now have Ms. DeRoses and Ms. Silk that are on right now. Uh, we have, matter of fact, had a meeting just today about what will be, uh, what we're going to be attacking, if you would, in regards to comms. We have lacked that in, in the city, uh, and especially in the multi, multilingual side. So I'm hoping that, um, by, I'm going to say summer or, you know, late spring, early summer, we're going to stop making that, that, I guess, that baby step, if you would. We do have many, um, departments that we need to kind of bring together, but, uh, we had this very discussion today about which departments we're going to look at. So to all the department heads that are here, uh, you know, you'll be getting the phone call, uh, in, in due time where we'll have this opportunity to start getting some of our comms, um, straightened out or, or actually creating a system. And that's really what we've been talking about over, uh, the short few weeks that, uh, Ms. Uh, Ms. Silk and Ms. DeRoses have been with us. So, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. I really look forward to, uh, seeing how this rolls out. Thank you.
Councilor Rook?
Yeah, thank you, Samir. Um, yeah, I think it's a great idea and, uh, I know that we have some recent hires that are going to be able to, uh, assist, uh, in communications, uh, you know, and hopefully in the future we'll be able to add to that, you know, with, uh, Council Robinson and Janes, uh, has, has stated, you know, all full, knowing how busy, you know, Mr. Fernandez is, uh, you know, running MIS. So, um, I think it's a great, it's a great start and looking forward, uh, to the rollout. Uh, and obviously, you know, this has been the way that information has been given out for, for a long time and, uh, now it's probably about time that, uh, we jumped on board. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for anyone? Here none that complete, uh, the report, need a motion to place on the file by Council Drinkwater, second by Councilor Mercier. The motion is adopted. Uh, before we go through the next item on the agenda, Mr. Manager has another good news to introduce, um, employee.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. Uh, I do want to take an opportunity to introduce another team member here, the Director of Developmental Services. Uh, this gentleman, uh, had weren't, once worked for, um, the city of Lowell and, uh, we loaned him for, for, uh, a little bit more than a decade to the city of Lawrence, but, uh, we're very lucky to, uh, have Mr. DeJesus back as the Director of Developmental Services. Um, Mr. DeJesus, I've known him for a number of years. Uh, he was hoping to start a little bit earlier, but you can tell, uh, he had a little bit of a knee issue, so, uh, he's working through that. So I just want to let everyone know that Mr. Lloyd DeJesus will be joining us, uh, Director of Developmental Services. He's just started with us a week and a half ago, I believe, if that's correct, uh, Mr. DeJesus. And, uh, we welcome you and we thank you very much, uh, and we're, we're looking forward to, uh, helping and changing, uh, all of our, uh, all, all the great folks over in DDS that have been doing a great job. So, thank you very much.
Welcome back. We now go to the next item on the agenda on six point three. This is communication from the city manager, request out of state travel, one DPD. Any comments or questions by the council? Councilor Leahy?
Thank you. Just a quick comment. Um, I'm glad to see that, you know, we're doing these. I'm glad to see that we're sending people out to, um, go to these summits and find out what's happening and bring it back to Lowell. I did have one question through you to the manager or whatever. Quick question on the travel trip. Is the per diem for the food, is that, can we just check on that to see if that's up to rate? I mean, it seems really low. We're sending people out to do work for us and that food, um, I assume that's the food item, right? It should be a little bit higher than that. I don't think you can survive on that.
Mr. Manager?
Maybe you can't.
Uh, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, uh, through you to the council. Uh, Council, that's been a standard number, uh, that we have utilized. We will, um, I know that the federal government just came out with a new, uh, mile per gallon. We'll, uh, in regards to mileage, we will take a look at that to ensure that that's appropriate, that's an appropriate number.
Looking up on my website and I, maybe I read it wrong, but it looked like it was really low on the IRS one, so, but, um, should be higher. They're, they're out working, should be able to afford a little bit better meals than that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Council. We will look in, into that.
Any other comments or questions? Here none, need a motion to adopt by Councilor Mercier, second by Councilor Leahy. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilor Janes?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Rook?
Yes.
Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yam?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Council Drinkwater?
Yes.
Council Getchere?
Yes.
Ten yeses.
Mr. Mayor?
Council Mercier?
Could we, uh, bundle, could I suspend the rules and allow to bundle the next four votes, seven point one, seven point two, seven point four, and seven point five?
Council Mercier, we haven't done that in a while.
Second.
Good to hear that bundle again, it's coming back. Second by Councilor Noon. I will read the, the votes and even though we're bundling, we can still make comments or question on that. Uh, seven point one is the vote to accept gift of fifteen thousand dollars from Hartford Foundation Career Center. Seven point two is a vote to accept gift of three thousand dollar from Lowell Five. Seven point three is a vote to accept expand fiscal year twenty-three earmarked funds for, we did that one already, apologize, so, we now go seven point four, uh, vote amend fiscal year nineteen, uh, through twenty, annual action plan, ESG CV. And the last item that was bundled was seven point five is a vote to amend fiscal year twenty-one through twenty-two annual action plan, CD BG. Any comments or questions on any of these votes? Here none, need a motion to adopt by Councilor Mercier, second by Councilor Yam. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Council Janes?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Rook?
Yes.
Council Drinkwater?
Yes.
Council Getchere?
Yes.
That's ten yeses.
The next items are the orders from the city manager, eight point one, order sixty-day trial, waifu reading, second reading by title. City Flo and the city council order pursuant to chapter two sixty-six of the Code of Ordinances, City Flo Massachusetts concerning section two sixty-six dash six, they are entitled temporary experimental regulations, temporary traffic regulations are hereby implemented for a period up to sixty days. Any comments or questions by any of the councilors? Council Leahy?
Thank you. I just, is anybody here, I just had a couple of questions on the, um, Pataca Street ones.
Uh, Mr. Manager, anybody here to answer that?
No.
Giovanni?
I just, so where are those exactly? Is that's coming up? It says northern, well, I understand the Northern Canal Bridge, but that's like the whole, from going up from like Aiken Street up to the bridge?
Giovanni? So it's, um, closer to the east campus, UML's east campus, so over by like where the dorms are.
All right. So not, okay, that, so Pataca Street is that side?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And then, um, the Aiken Street to Textile Ave, is that, um, that's that? So, and then, so it's all that section over on the east campus, all over there? Okay.
Correct, yeah. It, this was put in as a request directly that, uh, came in from UML.
All right. I was thinking it was the other side over by School Street, but it's not over that far. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Council Leahy, any other comments or questions? Here none, need a motion to adopt by Council Robinson, second by Councilor Janes. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Council Janes?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Uh, Council Rook?
Yes.
Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yam?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Council Drinkwater?
Yes.
Council Getchere?
Yes.
That's ten yeses.
The next two items are ordinances from the city manager, nine point one, ordinance amend chapter nine by creating sister city committee. Any comments or question? Council Janes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just had a few things that popped into my head while I was reading through this. Uh, before I get into those, though, I would like to say that I do, I do think this is a great idea and I think that the sister cities, um, is something we've neglected for too long and there's a lot to be gained, um, by seeing what other folks are doing, learning from that and, uh, you know, I think there's, there's a lot of benefits that can come from this. Um, so I'm excited to see this move forward, but I did have a, just a few questions or concerns with, with the structure of the setup, um, right off the bat. The first thing is the manager's office is mentioned in the cover, cover letter as having, uh, representation on this committee, but in the actual ordinance itself, it doesn't, doesn't really reference that. It's, you know, everybody is, um, appointed by the mayor. As far as I know and I'm aware, the only thing right now that is fully appointed by the mayor would be the city council subcommittees. Is that correct? Is there anything else that's fully appointed by the mayor?
Mr. Manager?
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Council, I believe you are correct. Uh, opiate task force has come into our mind as well in regards to that. Uh, this particular piece, um, heading over to, uh, public hearing was something that I discussed with the mayor and, um, I figured it should rely, excuse me, it should, um, live within the council, uh, similar to any other, um, any other committee that, that is created. Uh, if, if you want me to have a couple of appointments, I gladly would, but I just kind of, I'm, I'm thinking that this is coming from the body itself and the body can make the decisions as to who should, um, who should be on this committee.
Okay. Um, like I said, that was, just seemed to be a discrepancy, um, between the cover letter and the ordinance itself, uh, so I just wanted to bring that to, to attention before we referred this to a public hearing. The other thing that I was thinking about is, is every appointment is in conjunction with the mayor's term. Um, and to me, that seems like that might present some challenges in terms of continuance of effort and being able to, to do things longer term if every, at the, at the end of every council term, every member of this board is now no longer a member until, um, such time as the new mayor would reappoint. Um, so I didn't know if it might make sense to have either longer terms or have some representation from city staff that can survive the council term. Um, and just with this setup, it, there's, there's discussion in the ordinance of a prolonged vacancy and being able to fill that with someone who doesn't live in the city but works in the city. Um, with this current setup, a prolonged vacancy can't be any longer than two years, so I don't know at which point that would, that would kick in. So that was just another consideration that I had. Um, when kicking around all this, I didn't know if it might make sense to just do it as a, as a permanent subcommittee of the city council, um, so I'd just like to put that forward as a consideration, but, you know, I'm, I'm not fully wedded to this. I just, these were the things that popped into my head and I just wanted to share them before we referred it to a public hearing. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. Uh, in regards to the staffing piece, Councilor, uh, the city manager's office will be staffing it, uh, but once again, whichever, uh, discussion or points of interest that any of the councilors have, uh, I think that during a public hearing, once again, if you want, uh, the, the city manager's office to have some appointments or, or whatever the case may be, that is, that is completely fine with me. But, uh, as far as staffing, that will be done, uh, by Mr. Machado. So we're going to put, we're going to appoint him to it, so.
Any other comments or questions? Council Yam?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have similar kind of, um, a question, um, especially in the membership appointment terms qualification. If you look at number one, membership in the sister city committee shall be appointed through the authority of the city mayor. Approval by the city council shall not be required. But then go down to number six, in the event of the prolonged unfilled vacancy, the city mayor may appoint, subject to the city council approval, a non-residential, a resident who work in the city. It kind of contradict, one time it say the council does not need, uh, approval, but then the prolonged, um, at number six, that with the city council approval, I think either or, uh, it's just my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Any other comments or questions by the council? Um, if there's no objection, just a queef, a, a brief response from, uh, the podium and a great, great comments by Councilor Janes, um, this, um, the sister city relationship is very, very important to a city like Lowell where we have many residents that pretty much come from all of the world, uh, currently. And to have the cultural change, the educational change, the, the arts and the commerce, it's a very important for us to maintain a relationship, uh, in our new home as well as the homes that they come from. And to have a, a subcommittee, um, a longstanding subcommittee, as you suggested, uh, to continue to work formally because in the past, as you know, with the sister city, it's sort of been quote-unquote informal, um, the mayor sort of, um, requests a, um, to have a sister city relationship, um, on his or her own or request from the council member or sometimes from the residents themselves. But to have a, a sister city subcommittee, um, to respond to this request, whether from the mayor himself or herself or from the council or from the residents, and to have a discussion about it, I think that what formalizes it. And I will have more to speak, uh, at the, uh, public hearing, but I, I do foresee it as more of a, um, longstanding permanent subcommittee, uh, where the mayor will continue to make, uh, appointment, but not only from the members of the council, but also from, from member from, from the community as well. And we'll take suggestions from the council, from the city manager. We'll try to make it work where we have participation, uh, from, from the rest of the city. And, uh, again, we'll look forward to speaking that at the public hearing. Any other comments or questions from the council member? Here none, need a motion to adopt by Council Rook, second by Council Robinson, um, to refer this to a public hearing on February twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three, on favors
I just wanna say, I'm glad to see this movement. This is something this council's been discussing, and thank you for this.
Any other comments or questions? Here none, need a motion to refer to the planning board, and then to the public hearing on March twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-three, by Counsel Robinson, second by Counselor Janess, on favors the eye, opposed say no, the eyes have it, motion is carried. The next item is the reports from the subcommittee, ten point one, the neighborhood subcommittee, February seventh, twenty-twenty-three, the chairperson is Counsel Mercier.
Yes. Thank you, Mister Mayor. First off, on Tuesday, January third, the following motion was referred to the neighborhood subcommittee, it was regarding recycling and the trash bin replacement, so we held a city council subcommittee neighborhood meeting this evening. Present were my, uh, the board members, Counselor Wayne Janest, as well as Counselor Eric Getchy, and we met as well with Counselor Noon and Counselor Robinson were in attendance. Having been there was Gunther Wellenstein, he's the department, he's the deputy director of administration and finance from DPW, along with Rachel Hurst, she's the recycling coordinator, and they answered questions the best that they could, and what we learnt was that there are, they, they were a little bit behind with the recycling and fixing of the trash barrels and the recycling bins, due to the fact that they have, the lack of positions being filled, the recycling enforcement coordinator and solid waste and recycling technician positions, they have been vacant for quite some time, almost to the point of eight months. Recently, the city was able to fill these positions, as we learnt. There's a full-time position, recycling enforcement coordinator Gregory Del Rosario has taken that position, and the part-time solid waste and recycling technician is William Colera, so we, and then we have Brian Witz from, he does the field service technician work, so we do have those positions filled, and we did learn that there's a procedure when you need to have your recycling barrels repaired or replaced. There is a few ways to do this, there's a, you could report it on a portal directly, it's a direct report, and it forms the complaint into a tracker, they print it out, and once it's received, the tracker will explain what section of the city it's in, what's wrong with the barrel, et cetera, they establish a ticket number, and it takes between two to three weeks to be fixed. Counsel Getchy was explaining how, is there a way that we could do that and cut that in half? How do we communicate to bring it down to only a week? And because of the fact that we have those positions filled now, it's quite possible that it'll be like half the time. We're now fully staffed, so perhaps it will cut the fix time down to a week. DPW had a problem as well with the COVID, and, and there were a lot of delays because of that, so we were quite behind sometime in the DPW recycling. So, having said that, we did get some information, it was very, very informative, Gunther Wellenstein was there as well, talked about new rules that are in place, there's a mass DEP textile recovery rule enforcement will begin, it began in November, and fabric items such as clothing, bedding, and similar items can no longer be disposed at the curbside bins, but both donateable and usable items in a drop bin throughout the city, and DPW has such a bin there, so you could, instead of putting that at curbside, you could bring it down, the clothing and bedding and stuff. Anyway, I also asked questions about, what does UNR mean? We did learn that it meant unresolved, and we knew that manual meant that, the questions that I had asked him before, he, he wasn't really aware of it, but he gave me a printout of everything, and it was quite understandable, that if the complaint comes in from SWR, that's solid waste and recycling, and DDS is the Department of Developmental Services, the UNR was unresolved, and a manual, instead of just being on the property and it's considered property, manual meant it was a phone call, called in manually, so everything that we had asked for, we got answers from. I did talk to April, and I questioned how it would be nice to have someone go out into the school system, probably not all the time, but occasionally, so that we can train our young children how to recycle things, so that when they get older, they'll have a better idea and do a better job in it. She says that there's the green team sponsored by the Mass DEP, which is the Department of Educational Programming, and they do go out into the schools and educate the children. It was very, very interesting. We did get some brochures here, the, I think they're doing a great job. I'm gonna just say that they do have the coordinator go out and, uh, waste management does warn owners, they don't ticket them, but they warn them, and, and I was telling the people at the subcommittee meeting that I went down Andover Street to go to work this morning, and everybody had their recycling and their trash out. When I came home, I could clearly see that all the trash and recycling was picked up, except this one green bin, it was overflowing, and you could clearly see the cover wasn't on tight, but you could see that they had plastic bags in the green bin loaded with trash. That's not acceptable, there was a green sticker on it, so people are doing their job, and I was happy to see that, because, you know, we get burdened by that when people don't follow the rules, so that was a clear, good sign that people are doing their job. So we did have a very good meeting, if anybody of my colleagues wants to make any comments, and I left something out, please feel free to, but we're all fully staffed in the recycling. We did talk a little bit about volunteerism, and I remember from years ago, how we had people associated with the senior center that worked a portion of their taxes through volunteering at the DPW recycling, and I'm wondering if we could continue that again. They, people did a very good job the last time, and then with the COVID, everything like went awry from one place to another, and it never returned, but they did get a lot of help from the seniors who worked off their taxes by being volunteers, and I think it was run through the senior center. If we could look into that again, that would be a good idea, so if any of my colleagues want to add on to whatever I forgot to say, that'd be great. Even you, John, do you wanna add into it?
I think you got pretty much everything that was said, Rita, nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mercier, Chairperson of Subcommittee, thank you for your report. Any other comments or questions to the Subcommittee Board? Here none, need a motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Counsel Leahy, second by Counsel Janess, on favors the eye, opposed say no, the eyes have it, motion is carried. We now go to the next item on the agenda, which is ten point two, this is the wide inspection, Verizon New England Inc., place one new four-inch conduit approximately forty-six feet in a southwesterly direction from existing pole, Lakeview Avenue. Any comments or question by anyone? Here none, need a motion to accept and adopt the accompanying orders by Counselor Yem, second by Counsel Noon, motion is adopted. We now go to section eleven, which are the petitions. The first petition is eleven point one, claims for property damage, any comments or question by counselors, counselors? Here none, need a motion to refer to Law Department for report and recommendation by Counsel Rourke, second by Counsel Robinson, motion is adopted. Eleven point two, miscellaneous wings of Lowell Hartford Sign and Design, request installation of overhanging sign at twenty-six A, Market Street, any comments or questions? Here none, need a mo, motion to refer to Law Department for report and recommendation by Counsel Noon and Counsel Janess, on favors the eye, opposed say no, the eyes have it, motion is carried. I'm sorry, there, there was no registered speaker on this, on eleven point one? I'm sorry? Did you, who did you talk to? Sure. What, what in the council, was this eleven point one you mentioned?
If we can figure out which.
The gentleman mentioned eleven point one with his claims on property damage. Any counselor would wanna make a motion to suspend the rule and have the gentleman speak on it?
If he has an outline on which one of the four that's there, I, I don't have a problem with it, but if he doesn't have an outline on one of the four that are basically from potholes, then I don't know what he would talk about, about property damage, 'cause it's not on the agenda.
Okay, it's not, it's not on any of the agenda, so we cannot accept the suspension of rule to have you speak, but if you could, if you could call the clerk's office tomorrow, you could file petition to speak at the next meeting, we'll, we'll be able to do that. Right? But it's not, it's not on the agenda for, I apologize. Okay. If I could have your attention, please don't speak at the same time, actually, because we're not able to understand anything you said, but again, to the gentleman, I ask that, none of the issue that you want to talk to is on the agenda. It, it is not, it's not on agenda, and. This, this is a, 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 a meeting, and, which has to be. The, the item, the, the item, the item has to be on the agenda. It, it's not on anything that, that you want to talk, talk about. But it's not on the agenda, so the process is, I ask you that, if you could contact the clerk's office.
Mister Mayor, can we stop recognizing the crowd and move the meeting, please?
Sure. Okay. So I, I'm gonna ask, okay, I'm, I'm gonna ask you to, if you would like to participate in the meeting, or to listen to the rest of the meeting, you're welcome to do that, but, but I, I would like to ask you, hold, hold on a second. We're not, we're not, we're not stopping you from speaking, but it's not the, the night forward, again, you can contact the clerk's office to speak for, for next week. Okay. So we are going to continue the rest of the meeting, sir? We are going to continue the rest of the meeting, so I would ask you to, please, you can sit down or leave the chamber. Thank you. So if the, the public watching out there, there's nothing on the agenda to even suspend the rule to, to speak on, with that said, we now move on to the next line item on the agenda, which I believe is eleven point three. Eleven point three is Boston Gas DBA National Grid, request installation of twelve-inch plastic gas. Any comments or question on this item? Here none, need a motion to refer to a public hearing on February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three, at seven PM, by Counsel Janess, second by Counsel Drinkwater, the motion is adopted. Item eleven point four, National Grid, request revision of previously approved petition for added installation of seventy-five feet of underground electric conduit along Boulevard Street. Any comments or question by the counselors? Here none, they refer to, need a motion to refer to public hearing on February twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three, seven PM, by Counsel Getchy, second by Counsel Leahy, motion is adopted. We now reach section twelve on the agenda, which are the City Council motions. We have eighteen motions, so let's work together and make this as efficient as possible. We'll start with item twelve point one, it's a motion by Counsel Getchy, he shall set the, the tone for the rest of the motions. Counsel Getchy, request the City Manager report on all unpaid invoices for parks and facility rentals, the group who owes the funds, the date of rentals, and the policy for renting city parks and facilities, second by Counsel Yem. Counsel Getchy?
Thank you, Mayor Chow, it's gonna be a long night, then, if I'm setting the pace through you to the manager. The reason for this motion is, I was watching the Board of Parks meeting the other day, and someone, the secretary, had said that there's thirty thousand dollars in outstanding bills. The policy, and one other thing that comes to mind is that there's different rules for everybody, and I don't know how the Parks Board has the right to waive any fees without coming back to the council to waive the schedule of fees. So if we can outline how this happens, how much is owed in back funds, and going forward, I don't know how people are renting fields without paying first. So I, I just think the policy needs to be set in stone, and these boards, they don't have the right to waive fees, no matter what they think, that's a function of the manager or this board, I believe it's this board, but once the schedule of fees are put in place, there is no wiggle room. I guess through you, Mister Mayor, to the CFO, could you, or, or even to the city solicitor, what, who has the right to waive fees that are on the schedule of fees?
Through Mister Manager to Mister CFO?
This may be a, a better question for a legal opinion, but traditionally, the jurisdiction rests within the city manager's office. Typically, there would have to be good reason, but the council sets the fees with the schedule of fees, which is in an ordinance. There may be separate statutory jurisdiction for some boards, like the, the License Commission, I'm not sure, but we, we can get a report back on that for you, counselor.
If you could include that in the motion, because while you're watching this, it, it doesn't seem that it's very efficient on how we're collecting funds over there, how we're charging people, sometimes it depends on who comes up with the best story and gets waived fees over there, so I, I just think that that board needs to be, even if, if this council, the will of this council is to lower the schedule of fees, I, I don't have, but it has to be whatever is good for one should be good for all. Thank you.
Counsel Rourke?
Yeah, I think, I know by prior time on the council, there were some motions that were filed, and I think ordinances were passed that waived fees, you know, youth baseball organizations, youth basketball organizations, and, and things like that, so if we can get that as part of the report as well, that may help, you know, solve some of the issues. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions, not motions? Here none, on favors the eye, opposed say no, the eyes have it, motion is carried. We now take item twelve point two, a motion by Counsel Getchy, request City Manager provide the City Council with a legal opinion, by still wider city and not the school department, is financially responsible for school department lawsuits, second by Counsel Robinson, Counsel Getchy?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. This is an interesting topic, because as we all know, as we go through, the school side makes decisions, and legal judgments against the city comes out of the city side, so we have no input on how this is working. So through you, Mister Mayor, to the city solicitor, how are school department lawsuits handled? So when, when, when a school department lawsuit comes. So when, when, when a school department lawsuit comes up, how does the solicitor's office handle those?
Through Mr. Manager to Madam Solicitor.
I've never had that experience before. I'm only three weeks into my new job. But, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. I said, I've never had that experience before. I'm only three weeks into my new job. If, who, who's filing the suit? Is it the school committee, or are we the moving party in the case?
That's a question that you guys would answer, not, on, on our end, what happens is the school, there's a lawsuit against the school committee for an action that they've taken, or, not the school committee, the school department, whatever way it works, and then it ends up to us for final payment, more or less. We don't really have a say in any of this. So just recently, you're watching them want to hire an outside counsel without, and, and, could you explain, have you been brought up to speed on any school department lawsuits currently?
No, I haven't been brought up to speed on them. I do know of, well, I know of one that's pending, but I, I, I can't really speak about it, because I don't really know the details about it.
So the one that they're, they're looking to go to outside counsel on, are you aware of that?
Okay, I am somewhat aware of it, but this matter started with the last council that we had, Ms. O'Connor. And she's probably a fine person, a lovely lawyer and all of that, but she did not leave a paper trail for us. We have no idea who the parties are, what it's alleged that they did, where they did, how they did it, why they did it. So we have to start from scratch. That's why when I spoke with them yesterday, I asked them to please pump the brakes, because we don't have, we don't have any information. We need to find out who are these people, and have them come in and meet with us, talk to us, and tell us what the issues are, and we can start from there. Right now, I think the school committee probably knows who the people are and knows what, it's alleged that happened, but they're not sharing with us.
If I could intervene, the school committee members do not know, Madam Solicitor.
I'm sorry?
We do not know.
They don't know?
We do not know who the alleged people are.
Oh, okay.
Before, before we go any further, Mayor Chow, did you even know that there was a lawsuit that they had to seek other legal counsel for?
So I think the best way to do this one, Councillor Gishia, if we give time to the manager and the solicitor to look into this and provide you a full report to your motion, I think that might be more helpful.
Well, and again, just going back, I just would like the, the council to be provided with the regulations as to why the city side is responsible for settlements based on the school department's decision, and the protocols on how we end up in the middle. And I understand that the funding source piece, but it just looks like they make decisions. I don't know if they're good or bad. I just know we end up in executive session and end up paying lawsuits. And we don't have a say in anything that we're paying, and it looks like it's coming out of the taxpayer's side. And I don't understand how, if they make decisions, they're not held responsible for their decisions. So their decision currently is to go to outside counsel or whatever they want to do. But on our end, we don't even know, and even the mayor, who we send over as our representative, has no idea on what is going on in this particular case. And whether you've been here one day, three weeks, there should be a protocol that's followed when a lawsuit comes into the city, and it should go a certain way. So that's what I'm looking for, is the outline on how does it become valid? And, and, you know, when you're talking about personnel contracts and stuff, such as the superintendent of schools, or the HR director, or whoever's over there that are non-union, there are places that these people can go if their employment is violated. They certainly can go to the Massachusetts Commission Against Discrimination, or, or wherever they have to go. But to have an employee come to, say, the city council, or to the school committee, saying that they're not being heard, and then we hire outside counsel, just seems very convoluted to what the outline should be for city government. It, it becomes very political in my end, because there are functions that should be followed. And if someone, and they may be right, I don't know the case, but if they know that something, someone's been wronged, and they come to me as a city councillor, I send them down to the Massachusetts Commission on Discrima- Discrimination, or wherever they have to go. But I certainly wouldn't say, okay, this city council needs to go hire outside legal, because we don't trust the legal, or whatever the reason is. I, I don't know the reason. But we were also told during the same meeting, the, the school department side is flush with money. They have plenty of money to spend on an attorney. I don't have plenty of money to lower the tax rate for people, and I gotta keep going to the CFO and saying, hey, are we spending this way or that way? So I'm, I'm just always on that balance. And I would recommend to this board that whatever meets the qualification spending to the school side, since they're flush with money, we should meet the bare minimum, because they're flush with money. If they could take school side monies and not spend it on students, and they're so flush with money, I just don't get it. So I, I'm trying to figure it out, and if someone's violated, you know, someone's rights, that's what they have other legal options to do. That would be on the employee to find those legal options, not on the government agency, who we may feel did or didn't do that.
Well, that's something that we plan to have a discussion in our staff meeting tomorrow.
Thank you.
Councillor Robinson?
Thank you. I'd just like to say, I think this is a good motion. I think I'll be looking forward to the response to this. I think we've seen in the past where we end up on the hook for decisions that weren't made from this board. And, and if that's the case, would you be open to amending also part of the report? What path would we have to, to kind of protect ourselves in the future from situations that may arise like this? If the maker of the motion would be amendable to that?
Councillor Gishia, accept the amendment to-
So the amendment to the original motion would be to include, what would be this board's path to shield ourselves from future potential litigations that, that have nothing to do with the city side operations? Thank you.
Councillor Rook?
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I look forward to the response as well. My concern is, you know, when they went and, and asked for outside legal counsel, you know, when there was really nothing that was given or offered up pertaining to why outside legal counsel would be needed. I'm saying that that comes from the school department's budget. But, you know, back to Councillor Gishia's point of, you know, we're on the hook for it. Is solicitor's opinion that if no, I guess reasonable cause comes forward to, to the city solicitor's office, that the hiring of the outside agency can't be done? Because it's nothing to, to investigate, nothing to look into?
That's what the outside counsel would be looking into, to see if there's something to investigate, to see if there was some cause someone was discriminated against, or something like that.
So just a general stop making phone calls, or does it come from our solicitor's office?
I'm sorry?
So just, I guess the question would be is, has your office received anything at all that, that has any type of reasonable cause in it to, to warrant an investigation or an inquiry?
I haven't seen anything. We're looking through our files, the old solicitors' files, the old councils who were working there, to see if they have anything written down that we could go on, but I haven't seen anything as yet.
And I'm not, and I'm not talking about this particular case, I'm just talking about in general, right? You know, under mass general laws, reasonable cause has to be found in order to go forward on any inquiry. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And to your knowledge, and to your office's knowledge, nothing has-
We haven't seen anything yet, no. We've looked through the old files and the old materials that we have around there. We haven't seen anything.
So would it even legal to go forward and hire outside counsel if no cause at all has been presented on anything?
I'm sorry, if what?
Would be, is it even legal to hire outside counsel if no reasonable cause has been found on anything?
I wouldn't say it's illegal. Probably foolhardy, but not illegal.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councillor Gishia, for filing this motion. You know, if there is an, an allegation or something, we need to find out whether verbal and/or written, it doesn't sound like to me, from hearing you, Mr. Mayor, and city solicitor, that there is any, should there be any? It is responsibility of the body, whether the school committee or city council, to look into it, to ensure that the process and the policy is followed. You know, you don't jump from A to Z, and, and not really the sources that you have, the vehicle that you have in place. In these cases, you have the city solicitor. That hasn't been exhausted. And yet you step further, just because you have money. That's not your money, it's a taxpayer's money. At the end of the day, what happens is that you open yourself up for soup. And who's gonna end up pay for it? The taxpayer. That's, this is, this is trouble, I see. So I don't know where this go, but you can really willy-nilly and said, let me go to outside counsel, let me find out the allegation. There's no allegation, there's no allegation, then what's to find out? I'm troubled, really, by this, and, and I think, you know, I thanks Councillor Gishia for bringing it up. But I hope that, you know, we resolve, at the end of the day, it's, it's, it's this, this kind of thing, you know, shouldn't happen, because I strongly feel that the process, or the policy, has not followed through thus far. Maybe I'm wrong. If I am, I, I will, you know, gladly apologize for that.
Any other comments or questions from any, Councillor Robinson?
This kind of reminds me of the situation in the past when I, when I was involved with the, the union groups here, and repeatedly, we'd have violations of our collective bargaining agreements from the school side against our organized labor group on the city side. And what would happen? The city would end up having to pay multiple time after time after time, but the city yet had no say over the matter. So again, I hope there's a way that, moving forward, if, if decisions are made outside of this body, we can shield ourselves and our taxpayers. Thank you.
Councillor Rook?
And quickly, Mr. Mayor, you know, I also think that it's the council's right to know how much money is being spent on, on things such as, you know, investigations or lawsuits, if, if we're gonna be on the hook for, you know, for the price.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. Council, that is correct. We would know, and I believe the auditor would be able to pick up on that as to what the cost would be for the hiring of an attorney or, or whatever. We, of course, would know what the, if there happened to be a lawsuit, what would happen at the end of the day, of course, in an executive session.
Thank you.
No other comments? All in favor say I, opposed say no, the eyes have it. The motion is passed. The next motion is twelve point three. Councillor Gishia requests city manager provide an update on the water and wastewater enterprise accounts, current revenue for fiscal year twenty-three, and with a all but respect to the projections for fiscal year twenty-three, second by Councillor Leahy. Councillor Gishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow, and through you to CFO Baldwin. This is just more or less like we got the update on the parking enterprise fund and where we were at. And I just want to make sure that we're either in a positive or negative place and, and see where our revenue is versus our expectations, because we're way off in the parking, and, and I'm not saying anything's off or on. I just, we just wonder where we are in that, in those accounts. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Here none, on favor say I, the motion is adopted. The next motion is twelve point four. Councillor Nguyen requests the city manager provide the city council with an update regarding the twenty-twenty-three spring sweeping program, including additional equipment purchases with all but funds, second by Councillor Yen. Councillor Nguyen?
Mr. Mayor, motion, speak for yourself.
Great, thank you, councillor. We should start with you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councillor Robinson?
Do we have any registered speakers on any of the motions left?
Mr. Clerk, do we have any more? We, we do not.
Okay, thank you.
On that motion, on favor say I, opposed say no, the eyes have it. Motion's carry. The next motion is twelve point five, by Councillor Nguyen, requests the city manager have superintendent of police make presentation in the executive session regarding the body camera programs implementation and training, second by Councillor Musia. Councillor Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I believe, firmly believe that this, the rollout, they call it soft rollout of this program, certainly will improve police accountability. It's also, it's a powerful tool to deal with domestic violence cases, you know, because, you know, aftermath of the crime or the attack, you know, one would see injury, and oftentimes of the victim. And, and particularly the domestic violence cases, victims usually don't go forward, in most cases. Right, so you have that as evidence, you know, body camera. And so this certainly is gonna help, it's also helping cases, you know, vilify the police action, you know. One, you, you have sometime offenders that go out there, that got arrested for whatever reason, and then, you know, go to court, dress up, look good, and it's not like he was, you know, when he was arrested. Right, so, but the body camera tell it all. And, and that's, that's helped the police in term of, and helped the DA office in term of the prosecution of the case. I think this is a good, a good agreement between the police union and the, the superior officers. My understanding that the soft rollout is going to start with thirty officers. And so what we'd like to know is like, more or less, that, you know, in executive session, maybe found out in term of the training and the implementation. And I know earlier, we did vote on Senate to, I believe, a open, a, a public hearing, actually, on the digital specialists to actually working on these cases as to what to edit and what to save and stuff like that. And the period of save, as Deputy LeBlanc yesterday reported to the Ventura Association, is that you can save that footage for three years, you know, in case you need it for a number of reasons. So I'm, I'm really excited that, 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 that the city start to roll out on this very soon. I know that they don't have the cameras here yet, but they will be doing that soon, which is good for the city and good for our police department. Thank you.
Councillor Janes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, thanking my colleague for bringing this motion forward. I too am looking forward to seeing this program roll, roll out and learning more about it from our, our folks in the police department. And I think there's, there's a lot of good information for us to be gained here. But I did, just one slight concern with the motion, which is, does this actually qualify for something that can be discussed in the executive session? And maybe that's a question for the solicitor. I'm just not sure if it falls under one of the purposes.
Through Mr. Manager to Madam Solicitor. Do you think, would you mind repeating your questions again?
Sure, no worries. I was just curious if this discussion would fall under one of the purposes to actually have an executive session, or if this is something we need to discuss in open session.
Put out the microphone, madam. If you turn on your microphone, please.
I'm sorry. Oh, yes. Okay. So with respect to that matter, the implementation would be subjected to, would be subjected to collective bargaining, rules of that sort.
So would that, that would qualify us discussing the procedures in executive session?
I would say so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this motion? Here none, on favor say I, opposed say no, the eyes have it. Motion's carry. The next motion is twelve point six. Councillor Nguyen requests the city manager update city council on status of adopting an affordable housing trust fund pursuant to MGL Chapter forty-four, subsection fifty-five C, second by Councillor Gishia. Councillor Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I filed this motion a while back, and actually asking for the city to explore the benefit of establishing the Affordable Housing Trust. I think the, the local, you know, housing trust allowed the city to collect fund for affordable housing. And, and one can use that fund for local initiative to, you know, really create or and or preserve affordable housing. And we talk a lot about affordable housing, you know, or, 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 or housing in general. So I think this is a good idea. So I think this is a good idea. I know that other, maybe about 100 or so other city municipalities are doing this. So, you know, looking into it, this is another source of revenue, similar to Community Preservation Act that we, as a council, passed, I believe, in 2019. So, any, you know, way to looking at outside resources to help address issues of affordable housing in the cities is a good thing. So, a report on that and maybe send it to the Housing Subcommittee to have more discussion on this, that'd be a good thing. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Here none, all in favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. Motion is adopted. The next motion is 12.7. Counsel Robinson requests city manager facilitate a meeting with the LTLC, which is the Lowell Transitional Living Centre, and the city council, as well as provide copies of all policies, procedures that are relevant to city contracts, second by Counselor Noon. Counsel Robinson?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, could I bundle 12.7 and 12.12, 12.12?
12.7 and 12.12?
Yep.
Okay. Motion by Counsel Robinson to dump, bundle that with 12.12, second by Counselor Noon. Motion 12.12 is request city manager work with proper department and the LTLC.
Motion speak for himself.
Thank you, counselor. That's the best bundle, again. On favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carried. The next motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to bundle motion 12.8 and 12.9 as well.
Motion by Counsel Robinson to bundle 12.8 and 12.9, second by Counselor Noon. 12.8, Counsel Robinson requests city manager provide an update on what the administration's summer youth employment hiring goals are. And motion 12.9, Counsel Robinson requests city manager work with proper department and the public to identify potential improvements to youth transportation to bolster programming similar to the LPD Low Youth Service Program. Counsel Robinson?
I'd like to make a motion to send both of these to a youth subcommittee, please.
Motion by Counsel Robinson to send both motion to the youth subcommittee, second by Counselor Yen. On favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. That motion is carried. The next motion is motion 12.10. Counsel Robinson requests city manager work with the proper department to evaluate and adjust existing parking ban policy to ensure it is fair and equitable CDY, second by Counselor Drinkwater. Counsel Robinson?
This one is focused more on complaints, I've heard, and looking at possible time ending of parking in the designated locations. Because as has been explained to me, sometimes people get out of work 5:00 p.m., by the time they can even get to their vehicle, now they're forced to pay after the parking bans expired in the meantime. So, that's the way this, I would like to see the report come back. And I believe dealing with parking ban was referred to a subcommittee, a traffic subcommittee earlier in the night. So if I could also refer this one to the traffic subcommittee, I'd like to.
Motion by Counsel Robinson to refer this to the Transportation Subcommittee, second by Counselor Janess. The motion is adopted. We now, no other comments on that one. We now move to the motion 12.11. Counsel Robinson requests city manager explore alternative parking options as well as potential transportation programs in areas of the city without garages during winter parking bans, second by Counselor Leahy. Counsel Robinson?
Again, I'd like to refer this one as well to Transportation Subcommittee.
Motion by Counsel Robinson to refer this to the Transportation Subcommittee, second by Counselor Yen. The motion is adopted. You're moving this very fast, Counsel Robinson. We already taken up motion 12.12. We now go to the next motion, 12.13. Counsel Robinson requests city manager work with the community stakeholders to consider replicating a program similar to bugs and scrub that has been implemented in Toronto's unhoused shelters, second by Counselor Rook. Counsel Robinson?
This program, briefly, it's a unique program that was applied in Canadian shelters. It's the bug and scrub program. It was developed by Toronto Public Health Department. The bug and scrub program provides real employment opportunities to unhoused people by teaching them proper and efficient bedbug management techniques, such as inspection, steam cleaning, laundering, and the handling of infested personal items. In locations where the program was implemented, both shelter staff and patrons, they had functional knowledge of bedbug management and were able to effectively avoid further infestation. This is one of the things that we've been hearing, that it is an ongoing problem, and this is, you know, nationwide. It's so, anything we could do to encourage the implementation of IPM system in this location, I'd strongly encourage. Thank you.
Counsel Gishia?
This is an excellent motion. I think that when you start looking at pest management and how it affects people and the way that their living quarters are, I think it's imperative that this happen, especially in the areas of we're providing housing through the government. We do it at the facility that I work with, and it's a weekly, okay, here it is. And I think it's a quality of life issue for a lot of people. So, I think this is a great motion, and I thank Counsel Robinson for bringing it forward.
Any other comments or questions? Here none, all in favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carried. The next motion is Counselor, is item 12.14. Counselor Rook requests city manager have the appropriate city department meet with the Merrimack Valley Housing Partnerships to explore current home buyer assistance programs offered through MVHP to see if there can be an increase in access and opportunities for potential first-time home buyers in the city, second by Counselor Drinkwater. Counsel Rook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, I've talked about a couple times tonight, you know, with the housing issues that the city does currently is dealing with. I think it's been a good time to review some of the programs that we have with the Merrimack Valley Housing Partnership. You know, regards to single-family, multifamily, businesses, condos, things like that. You know, and also maybe, you know, look at some new things that we could possibly do, you know, to make some funding that's available and that's, you know, done on an annual basis, you know, and then low-interest loans, either through, you know, loans or grants. So, I think this is some options that are out there. And I know the DPD can use, you know, maybe some state and federal funds as well to assist this. You know, obviously, the goal of a young families is to get into homeownership and, you know, to have something that, you know, can turn over down the line, you know, and to keep things, you know, going in a positive direction. Again, you know, things are difficult right now, but, you know, this could be one of those, you know, forward-thinking ideas that hopefully we can use for the future of the city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, thank you to Counselor Rook for bringing this forward. I think it's a great motion, and I think there's a lot to be learned here. Just be wondering if the maker of the motion would be amenable to adding something on the end of this, that after this discussion, we can come back and have a presentation by MVHP and DPD to the Housing Subcommittee, just to get that information out in the public and let everybody know what's out there.
Yes, the motion by Counselor Janess, second by Counselor Noon. The motion is adopted. Counselor Noon, you also have a comment?
Yeah, just a quick comment, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counsel Rook. You know, Merrimack Valley Housing Partnership have done a great work over the years, decade and decade, helping first-home buyers with the help of DPD. And I know DPD also do first-home buyers as well, not first-home buyer, but also help those first-home buyers as well. Looking at this program, maybe enhance it or expand it or increase in terms of funding to help them, help those first-home buyer, you know, who apply for this. This is an awesome opportunity to really add more housings to the city. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. What can you say? My opinion, I know plenty in the community that have went through the MVHP first-time home buyer training classes and never thought it was even possible. So I think they've already shown that they're a great community ally for generational wealth building, and I think this is an excellent motion. So I thank my colleague for bringing this forward. Thank you.
No other comments for Counsel Rook's motions, all in favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carried. The next motion is motion 12.15. Counselor Rook requests city manager review that all city-owned buildings, schools, parks, and gyms have updated AED, the field blip, the field blip later. You give me a tongue tie, Counsel Rook.
Sound like me.
Field blip later is on sight. I'm not quite sure if you can say it either, Counselor.
Well, Counsel Robinson's through that word.
Counsel Rook?
Thank you, yes, pretty much speaks for itself. And, you know, have a brief discussion, you know, with Health Director Ms. Golden. You know, and she had a great recommendation, maybe see what we can do to offer CPR training to our employees, you know, both the city side and the school department as well. You know, a couple instances over the past month or two, you know, where young adults, students have, you know, have gone to cardiac arrest during gym or during games, and CPR and defibrillators have been used to save a life. So, speak for yourself. Thank you.
Counsel Gishia?
This is a very important motion. And one thing is, there's a long wait time to get these right now. So if there are some that we want to get ordered, we better get ordering, because there is a long wait time for these. Thank you, Counsel Rook.
Any other comments or questions? Here none, all in favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carried. The next motion is motion number 12.16. Counselor Rook requests city manager have DPD present a planned timeline for upgrades to Father Maguire Park, second by Counselor Noon. Counsel Rook?
Thank you. This was, I believe, airmarked, I believe, maybe two years ago. And I know that the city does have it now. I thought the initial timeline had the spring to decide some of the improvements. You know, maybe a good thing to come to a neighborhood meeting to go over it with the residents. I know that Counsel Noon spoke to me last night at the Pataqueville meeting, and this was actually brought up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments or questions on that motion? Here none, all in favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carried. The next motion is motion number 12.17 by Counselor Yen. Request city manager have the appropriate department, along with Util Design incorporate smart city concepts in Lowell Forward Master Plan, second by Counselor Drinkwater. Counselor Yen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Musia, Counsel Scott, and I attend the Lowell Forward Kickoff Community Workshop this past Wednesday, February 1st, at the Lowell Senior Centre. And I was impressed by the turnout and the presentation made by our DPD staff and the Util Design Company. As I walked through and viewed all that panels, I was excited and hoped that we can, that the city and the Util Design will incorporate the smart city components into the master plan, which is going to be the next 20 years. Smart city is the, is a technologically modern urban that using the technology, using broadband to collect data, and then use that information to manage and run the assets, resources of the city, including like the traffic lights and transportation, things like that. And I thought it would be perfect to add that component concept of the smart city to the master plan that the city will be using for the next 20 years, as I filed the motion last time regarding the smart traffic light. So one of the component of that smart city with that, using the data to channel the traffic where there's less traffic. I heard on these, on the West 6th Street and Bridge Street, and there's not a smart light, so there are no traffic on one side. But, you know, people have to wait until the timing of it change it to green. So, the smart component of the master plan should be incorporated in this master plan. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments or questions? Here none, all in favor say aye. The motion is adopted. The last motion is motion 12.18. Counsel Leahy requests city manager look into all arch dioceses property in the city for possible municipal or school use, second by Counsel Gishia. So that would mean, no comment by Counsel Leahy.
Motion speaks for itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Good job, Counsel Gishia. On favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carried. The next section is the announcement. The announcement by anyone? We go Counsel Gishia?
This won't take long. We just want to wish Tim Coughlin in the City Clerk's office happy birthday.
Great. Happy birthday to Tim Coughlin. Counsel Yen?
To the Chair of the Happy Birthday Subcommittee, I'm glad to wish Counselor John Drinkwater a happy birthday coming up. So have a wonderful, thanks, birthday.
Great job, Counsel Yen. No other announcement? Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. I just want to, this past weekend was obviously a lot of troubling weather that was going on, and I just have to make a couple of, this, a couple of points. But there was a lot of proper planning that resulted in the safety of many of our, or all of the homeless residents in our city, that we're looking for warmth, safety, meals, and even movies. A lot of the folks, Lowell Police Department, Lowell Fire Department, the folks over at the Health and Human Services, Ms. Golden, Ms. Fitzpatrick, Assistant City Manager here, Kim Gagnon and all of her staff over at the Senior Centre, and the nursing staff, as well as DPW. Overall, just so for edification for the councilors, through, on Friday evening, the protocol was that there were 53 walk-up folks, that's what they referred to it, over at LTLC. There were 46 people in the dorms. On Saturday evening, 50 people were walked up, or what they once again refer to as protocol. And there were 45 people in the dorms, and that seemed to be, that was also true on Sunday, with 45 in protocol and 45 in dorms. The hotels, they had 40 each night. And CTI, I'm looking at approximately 78. But in the warming station that we had put together over at the Senior Centre, we serviced approximately 50 people. And I think it's important to know, the people that had that opportunity, that wanted to be warm, safe, have three meals a day. Some stayed for an hour, some stayed for much longer than that. But the Senior Centre staff, you know, board games, cards, movies, it was something that I believe everybody respected, and I think it went off very well. Another thing that I know that the Lowell Police Department, because of the bone-chilling cold that we all know about, were there, the Lowell Fire Department and the Lowell Police Department, but especially the Fire Department, had gone out on 122 different calls when it came to freezing, freezing cold-related water issues. So, and I can't even begin to discuss, because we would be here for a lot longer, with our DPW, with Mr. Underwood over in the School Department, as well as our own Commissioner St. Seer. We had a number of issues that were a little bit beyond the control that we may normally have throughout the schools. But once again, for the custodial staff over at the School Department, as well as our DPW staff, they truly did yeoman's work in ensuring that our city was in, was quite frankly, in good order. Myself and the Assistant City Manager at Machado were around pretty much all weekend, and the men and women from the city served us proud in every aspect, from ensuring that people were warm, and that every aspect of different schools and different buildings, which we have a lot that most of you know, were tended to and cared for when there were problems. So I just wanted to let all of you know and say thank you to all of the residents that were bearing with us, but especially to the workers here in the city of Lowell that made it a very safe weekend, that quite frankly, could have been, could have been an extremely dangerous weekend, given the weather that we all experienced. I know that many, or a few of the councilors here, including myself, experienced frozen pipes and broken pipes. But we're working with all of our schools to make that happen, and I really, the Commissioner and Mr. Underwood over in the schools, they did a phenomenal job throughout our buildings, and so did all of our custodial staff and DPW. So I just want to say thank you to all of our employees here in the city of Lowell that made that, this past difficult weekend, a little bit better for everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just would like to echo what Manager Golden just said. You know, there were a lot of folks who pitched in this weekend, and, you know, we couldn't get through stretches like this without them. In particular, I just want to acknowledge that somebody from Lowell Fire Department spent their night in the lobby of my building last night, thanks to the fact that, you know, we had some issues with our sprinkler system and our alarm system, thanks to the cold. So, you know, he sat there all night and made sure that, you know, we could all sleep safely. So, you know, appreciate that, and everything else that folks in the city have done through the this stretch. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Everyone have a good night. Need a motion to adjourn by Counsel Drinkwater, second by Counselor Mousia. Motion is adopted. Have a great night, everyone.